We're going to go ahead and get started. We have a quorum.
Great.
Mr. Kimball, if you would, call the room.
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma is not here. Mr. Castillo is not here.
I'm good.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Yes, good. Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Present.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Great.
I have spoken with Mr. Lawrence that he will be a little late this evening arriving. If you would join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for our motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? We're going to get started with public hearing number two. In accordance with school bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members and for the record. All right. And our first speaker for tonight will be Amanda Blanchard.
Hello, guys. I don't know. Should I squeeze in there? Amanda Blanchard, speaking on behalf of the Falls Church City Education Association. I know that we are getting closer and closer to having all of our information related to the budget and just want to be sure that we go on record to make sure that the board understands that they should ask for what we need, the things that we need for materials and supplies, the things that we need for technology, the things that we need for salary increases. Ask for what we need and we will do the fighting on the city council side to make sure that it happens. We are here to support you. We will do what we need to do. You will hear from lots of folks this night about technology. Please know that they are the experts. They know what their classroom needs. They know what they need in terms of the materials, technology materials, that they have in their classrooms. So please take that with what they say, that that's what they need. I think that is everything I have for this evening and I look forward to the fourth. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mark Massey.
Hi, I'm Mark Massey and live at 203 Grove Avenue. First, I want to say thank you for giving of your time and for the amazing school system we have in Falls Church. It is an excellent example of what a public school system can be. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I've been in the information technology field for over 40 years. I was a software developer, a systems designer, a network engineer, a sales engineer, a hiring manager, a professional consultant, an international corporate teacher, and a college professor. So what I'm about to say comes from someone with a technically oriented degree, many professional certifications, and years of experience creating the modern technological world we live in. It is absolutely essential to the future of our children, our community, that our school system continues to prepare children for the modern world. Like or not, computing is everywhere. This brings many risks, but it also brings opportunity to those who are forward-thinking enough to take advantage of them. The genie is out of the bottle. I can think of no society that has ever successfully put a major socioeconomic force like computing back in the bottle. The only question for Falls Church is how we are going to deal with it. Are we going to embrace the opportunities computing brings or pretend it is not of vital importance? Our world is smaller than it has ever been and is likely to keep getting that way. This is because of technology and the economic forces it enables. When I taught software and project management to engineers in China, it became obvious to me that these are extremely intelligent, hard-working people who are finding a way to better themselves financially. I found it true on practically every continent where I taught or managed. Familiarity and competence with technology and software leads to economic success. Economic success is a very powerful foundation to grow a society on. When there's economic success, there's money for everything and everyone. Without it, there's money for none or just the very few at the very top. With economic success comes funding for education, a strong military, social programs, and music in the park. This has everything to do with how we educate our children. They must be familiar with the use of technology and risks associated with it. Enhancing the depth and breadth of the use of technology in educating our children is a critical part of a successful future for them and for us. Our students need an understanding of both local and global technologies. They need cloud technologies and they need local technologies. Please maintain what we are doing to educate our children and increase it as soon as possible. Our future is our children's success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Our next speaker is Gordon Thies.
So Gordon Thies, 802 Ridge Place. I know you guys are thinking about computers and whether to keep them. I think anybody would say that you're going to keep them. But what are you going to use? With computers, you don't have to have books. So I asked my kids this morning and this evening what they thought about what you're proposing. My 13-year-old said to tell you that kids use Apples a lot, that the computer science lab needs computers, that she's used Apple computers for years and knows her way around them, that they advance the school technologically, that they're easier to turn in my homework, and it's easier to communicate with my teachers. My 16-year-old says that Apple is more versatile than other systems, that she can access Google products, Microsoft products, Apple products, and other computer programs, and other systems don't offer that versatility. She says she can do her homework wherever and whenever she wants. The textbooks are online. She uses less paper and she doesn't have to carry or organize stuff. All the students have the computer. She says that's fair for everybody. Change would be, quote, "horrible." It would mess up her learning. Right now, as we speak, she's doing her homework using her Apple MacBook, I believe that's what it is, and editing an iMovie, something she can't do on a Chromebook. So that's from the kids. This is from me. I own an office here in Falls Church and we use computers and we use Microsoft. So I don't really get the Apple stuff, but I get computers. And so I understand that when I hire somebody, the first question I ask as a small business owner is what experience do you have with computers? That's number one. We use the Microsoft. And you know, Microsoft just went from Windows 7 to Windows 10. Windows 7 to Windows 10 creates chaos. Imagine going from Apple to Chromebook. I mean, the place is just going to be a mess. Apple products are well-known to the students. We got an Apple iPhone for both of our kids because they use Apple products at school. The Google Chromebook is cheap because it's cheap. It's just a dumbed-down operating system. It's not going to do what you want. I was a non-believer when this first came out. I couldn't believe, as taxpayers, we're going to spend this kind of money on this level of technology for the kids. But my kids showed me they've excelled because of these online resources. They're not our generation. They're the computer generation. They plan, they find resources, they complete their work, they can communicate better. The Apple computer is an important part of their learning and their life. So I'd stay with Apple. You know what works. I'm okay with investigating other things, but I think Apple's where to be and I'd ask you to stay there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thies. The next speaker is Hillary Crockett.
Good evening. Hillary Crockett, 1300 Seaton Lane. For the members of the school board, I am a member of the special ed advisory committee, but I'm here speaking for myself, not the committee. I am here tonight to share these Smile Don't Stare decals. Just wanted to share them here to you. Last year, I introduced a woman named Debbie Celine to our special ed advisory committee. She has a foundation called the Lollipop Kids Foundation, which is out of Rockville, Maryland. She started an initiative called Smile Don't Stare, which is a message of inclusion for children with disabilities. You can see her website at lollipopkidsfoundation.org for more information. Last year, Falls Church City Public Schools put her Smile Don't Stare PSA on the morning email blast. This is a PSA that's been used by Montgomery County. If you haven't seen the PSA, I encourage you to look on its website as it's quite a powerful positive message that's affecting for kids and adults alike. I'll just read this little excerpt from her website about Smile Don't Stare. "The Smile Don't Stare campaign is working to turn stares into smiles. Everyone knows the universal power of a smile in connecting with dear friends or distant strangers. And for a person living with a disability, a simple smile can help shift the tide from exclusion to inclusion. It is okay for a person to be curious when they first meet someone with a disability, and it is common to feel unsure about what to say or how to act, or perhaps of saying the wrong thing. The Smile Don't Stare campaign is designed to help people better understand and communicate with those living with disabilities. There are many ways to join the movement, but the first action is simple. The next time you meet a person with a disability, look directly at them and smile." And that's really the sum total of what I wanted to share tonight. The message is a good one and it'd be great to see them around town. Smile Don't Stare decals are a great inclusion conversation starter for parents, their kids, their friends. Seeing a Smile Don't Stare decal on the back of a car around Falls Church City or at the drop-off circle at school could change someone's perspective on how to respond to differences. We now have them on our cars. I'd encourage people to look at the website and get a decal if they're interested. These, again, are what they look like. And, sorry, the decals are on her website at a modest cost and the proceeds go to her foundation for kids with disabilities, which provides activities and mobility equipment. I don't know if it's okay, but I'd like to leave a few here, some free ones here. And I have some at home and I'll bring some to the next special ed advisory committee meeting as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett. Our next speaker is Melissa Teetz.
Hello, I'm Melissa Teetz. I'm at 802 Ridge Place and I'm on the planning commission, so I'm going to keep my comments brief, as someone who appreciates brief comments. I think basically we are concerned about what we're hearing about the technology usage in the schools, that we may be changing platforms or maybe trying to back off of it a little bit. And I really feel like the integrated tech system we have right now is working really well. All of us parents have learned how to use Power School. We've learned how to use Schoolology. We've learned how to help our children deal with the Apple products and make sure they can get their homework turned in. And our kids have really thrived off of it. I also noticed that a lot of the teachers seem really well-integrated into it now and it wasn't that way a few years ago. But we're not, you know, I just think if we were to back off of the program we have right now, we're going to be putting our children and teachers in a situation where we're going to be relearning things. The parents are going to have to relearn. I really just don't want to go back, especially back to more of a paper system. My son, who did not have this technology, we often would help him clean his room and find homework stuffed under his bed because it was on paper and it just somehow never made it into his backpack. And it's just great to live in a place where the kids can finish their homework and just turn it in. And then that's off their list. They don't have to go into school the next day worried about getting these things turned in. So, and I just want to say from my perspective and my job, we are striving to be a paperless world. I work for a nonprofit and the other nonprofits I worked at have all gone paperless. We would not hire someone who didn't understand how to work in a paperless environment because it just takes a lot of work to learn how to edit documents electronically. We have offices in five other countries. We just don't have the time to deal with someone who has to live in a paper world. So integrated technology is the way jobs work now.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Jason.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Jason and I'm a mathematics teacher at George Mason High School. I have the privilege of working with a wide range of students from our lowest-level math class, remedial algebra, to one of our highest-level math classes, AP Calculus. Tonight, I would like to say a few words about how technology has affected my students and my teaching. I see my second language learners liberated because they can access material at their level. I see all students supported by the technology provided to them by the school. I have students that work ahead because the materials they need to go on are at their fingertips. I have students that communicate with me over breaks and weekends or when they are absent. Students are empowered to explore their own interests and go beyond what we are asking them to do in class because they have a tool that allows them to investigate a world they might not otherwise have access to. The computers allow my students to work asynchronously, to explore concepts with dynamic graphs, to investigate questions, and to work collaboratively with groups while in different locations. The computers allow teachers to differentiate, enrich, and provide a myriad of content appropriate for different students with different needs. Many teachers have invested significant time and energy in creating rich, engaging content that students can access at home and at school. I am currently grading calculus projects that would have been impossible for my students to do without the computers. I have been able to provide feedback for my students without them having to wait for me to hand back papers, and they have been able to ask questions as they work through their projects. The results have been outstanding, far exceeding anything I would demand of them on a test or a quiz. Many teachers have worked hard to learn how to use the technology effectively to enhance lessons. I personally, over the past two and a half years, have taken five 30-hour technology classes to improve the way I utilize the computers with my students. And that is in addition to the 40-plus hours I have put in as required by Mason administration. As teachers, we are enhancing many of our lessons through the use of technology, but we are also teaching students how to use technology as a tool for research and investigation. Technology is ubiquitous in our lives today, and it is important that our students leave high school knowing how to use technology responsibly, efficiently, and effectively. I have seen a tremendous amount of growth and maturity in students in terms of technology use over the past two years. These computers even the playing field for all of our students. Students are able to leave Mason and go into the workforce and into universities and colleges as technologically literate citizens. Our students are not at a disadvantage because we provide them with the tools to be prepared when they leave our building. So in conclusion, I ask that you please continue funding the technology we use daily at Mason. Staying on top requires that we continue moving forward. Not having funding for technology would be a step backward.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Pam Mahoney.
Hello. Pam Mahoney, 204 Grove Avenue. Thank you for all the hard work you've done to painstakingly review the budget. I know it's extremely difficult to cut an increasingly smaller pie into more pieces. Thank you also for your continued examination of the use of technology in Falls Church. When I teach the public policy cycle to my government students, we discuss that the evaluation cycle is important to see what works and what policies need some tweaking. I know a lot of people put a lot of hours into this process, so know that it's appreciated by me, both as a staff member and as a Falls Church parent, because like many of Falls Church staffers, we both live and work here. So that needs to be said. I am here tonight, like others, to reiterate my belief that fully funding technology is important for Falls Church. I hope, and I think you've all read and taken to heart what's already been stated by over 90% of GM staff in our recent letter to the school board about our belief in the necessity to continue with Macs at Mason. I would ask you to ensure that this funding is kept intact within the budget so that we can continue to provide equity and excellence to all students. I'd also like to point out, you know, as the government teacher, I keep looking at Gabe because he had to suffer through it. Kate, there's another one over there, too. So I would like, we all know that in governments, once you cut a significant amount of money from a budget, it doesn't come back. So if we put this off for a year, if we don't renew the Mac lease for a year, it's hard to see a scenario in most government budgets where that money ever comes back. And as someone who's spent the last five years readjusting my teaching style to a more digital setting, I would find that really disheartening. But, and this is historic for me in speaking to the school board, I'm now switching hats as, for the first time in my 15 years here, I'm going to speak as a parent. As a parent of a middle-schooler and an upper elementary student, when my children get to Mason, if we did not renew this funding, they would be handed a five- to seven-year-old Mac that would be like dying on the first day of high school. And my kids are not the future computer programmers of tomorrow. God love them. They're not the robotics kids. They're good little liberal arts kids like me. Hi, I hope they're watching at home. Love you. But they're doing amazing things at all the schools. They're composing things, they're writing things, they're just passionately using this technology. So both as a mom and as a staff member, I would ask you to keep that funding intact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Allison Kuchma.
Good evening. Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. I just wanted to talk to you tonight, just to ask you, as you start the budget process, to just ask a lot of questions for those of us out in the community that have a lot of questions and don't have a seat at the table and can't ask the questions. For instance, last year, you know, we were really tight on money, but somehow there was $31,000 in cash lying around for a van that was purchased. I would still like to find out what the process was and where that money came from. So I also have a lot of questions about, as we look at staffing and we're hearing that class size is going up, to really look at the impact of the IB program on staffing, that we have some classes that are less than 15 students, possibly less than eight students at the high school. So that's a programming choice. And so when I look at the testing results for our English language learners and we see that 90 kids share two teachers, I think it becomes, you know, an equity issue and we ought to look at the impact of the IB program and think, is there a better way to serve some of these upper-level classes, maybe online? And one thing, as you look at the middle-years program, it would be great, I was at the meeting in 2014, I didn't hear questions about cost and the impact on staff. So for example, I heard there's a request for a world languages teacher, and that is to fulfill, I guess, an obligation in the middle-years program to have this languages teacher. But when my students went to Mary Ellen Henderson, since they received special education services, we didn't have access to language because it was a block that interfered. But I find it really interesting, when the middle-years program needs another language class to provide NYPD students access to the, so we can have this requirement, you know, the request comes forward for an additional foreign language teacher. Well, that request wasn't made on behalf of special education students, and my understanding of federal law is that they were supposed to have equal access to what non-disabled students have. So that kind of brings up another question, you know, what, and I haven't heard at the meetings, what are some of the questions that are being asked about the middle-years program and the impact to access for students with disabilities? I haven't heard it come up. I think that would be a good thing to review, maybe before you launch the program, but we've already done that. So I just think there's some things that we need to be thinking about. The other thing I ask that you really consider, a special education program audit, similar to the ESOL audit. Special education is expensive and, you know, we've had some issues here in this community with special education. There's been some OCR and state complaints and there's issues. In fact, it's impacted the requests. We need new staff to, you know, address these issues. So one way would be more of a proactive approach and budget for a special education audit. And I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. The next speaker is Cassandra Rice.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Rice, 106 South Lee Street. So I'm here to talk about the current technology regarding the budget decision process. So currently, we have our MacBooks. And so technology in general and having personal devices for every student is very useful, especially for my family. There are five kids and three of us are in high school right now. And we all, and then there's my little sister who's in eighth grade, and we all need access, personal access to our own technology because we're on it for hours to do homework and various schoolwork. So the MacBooks do that very well. My sister in eighth grade does not use a MacBook yet, but my brother and I both use them quite frequently. Actually, I use mine every day during school and out of school. Anyway, so moving on, I know that another option being explored were Chromebooks. And I want to point out that Chromebooks are kind of inferior to our current system, actually very inferior. They have very low processing power. They actually have a third that of our current MacBooks. And also, they have very limited software capabilities. Our current MacBooks allow students in computer science classes or on the robotics team, or students who simply program as the hobby to program. And Chromebooks would not allow that. Another example of software the MacBooks can do, I, we have access to various Adobe softwares, like Adobe Illustrator, Adobe Photoshop. We would not have that same access on Chromebooks. And I have actually bothered learning Photoshop and Illustrator because it was available. And I've done some very fun stuff with it. And though, exploring, it's just, my point is that exploring creative endeavors is important because school is also not, should not be our sole life capability, I don't know, sorry, should not be the only thing we have in our lives. Anyway, sorry, I'm almost done. So, yeah. We, just, our current system is a lot more, is preferable to institute in Chromebooks and trying to change the system. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker's slip is Melissa Dana.
Hi, I'm Melissa Dana. I live at 314 North Lee Street. And excuse me while I stumble, I didn't actually have prepared remarks for tonight, but I've heard so many impassioned people speak and write about the MacBooks and the Apple program and how much especially at George Mason, George Mason is needed. And my thought always goes to money and priorities. And at the recent technology advisory committee meeting, I was speaking with one of our esteemed administrators, whom I admire very much, and he asked me, Melissa, you know, $350,000 a year, how much, you know, how much does that even give you? That's nothing. And how many teachers can you even hire for that? And I thought, well, interesting that you asked that because I think that covers actually about three teachers. And guess how many teachers we were short this past year or this present school year at the elementary level? I think it's three. We're short a teacher in grade five kindergarten and maybe third grade or second, I'm not sure. So my point is, if we are going to continue to fund the Apple program, let's think about alternative means of financing because I can afford to buy computers, but I don't think the school system is going to let me hire a teacher. So perhaps the school system could take that $350,000 and hire the teachers that we need and ask parents to pay for the computers. And I can already hear about 500 parents groaning as I say that, but I think there are plenty of parents who are willing and able to pay a computer fee if you will give us the teachers that we need. And I speak personally, and I know many others who would do that. So I just ask you to consider that, to consider other forms of financing for the computers so that the school system has more funds available to hire teachers and pay for some of the many other vital, vital things that are on the principal's needs list, which seem to be a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dana.
Do we have one more speaker's slip? It'll be short.
All right, and now our final, unless there are others who are here. Kathy Kleiman?
Kathy Kleiman, 203 Grove Avenue. I've spoken on this issue many times, several times, so I won't repeat it. But I think we should have the accurate budget figures on the table, and I believe it's $350,000 a year divided by four. I believe this is a four-year lease for the MacBook heirs. It's three years now? Okay, that number has changed over the last few weeks. But it's not $350,000 a year. It's divided over time. And then we purchase the MacBooks for a dollar apiece and they go on to a refresh cycle. They go down to the elementary school, unless that's changed, too. And so, as I said in my last set of comments, it's stunningly affordable and it does, it's stunningly equitable, and it doesn't force our children, like my son and my daughter, who are two years apart, to fight with each other over the laptops, over the computers. It's a wonderful program that we have. Our teachers are using it. The transition's done. It's in full force. I'd love to continue it, and again, I think it's very affordable. So I just wanted to put the numbers on the table and thank you for correcting me.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, and we're gonna, the other comments, we're gonna move on to our Budget Work Session Number Four. And the first topic of this evening is 3.01, and that is the review of the, of technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, audience. What we've been doing is consistently reviewing each of your priorities and in your work plan. In that context, your School Board Priority 2.1 stated that you were to reconvene the Division Technology Advisory Committee, so that a review could take place of the current device structure and the academic needs of each building, to coincide with the budget discussions for this upcoming fiscal year. Our staff has worked very hard at this, and I've reviewed their work, and we made some adjustments and some details, attentiveness to look at a lot of different options. And I would very much like to now present that to you through the use of our very fine staff. And I'll start with Ms. High.
Good evening. As Dr. Schor said, we have reconvened our Technology Advisory Committee, and we had four meetings over a two-month period. We will continue to have meetings to address some of the topics that our committee members wanted to hear about, such as balance, such as the instructional pedagogy, and a few other things. Tonight, I'd like to start with our Director of Technology, Deng Nguyen, who will share with you first about the student and staff devices. And then we'll proceed with Mr. Steve Knight, who will be sharing with you the agenda from the Technology Advisory Meetings, as well as some information that we hope you find helpful tonight. And at the end, if there's any questions, please, we're, we're here to answer questions. And we do have, you know, some principles here if you have questions specifically for their, their levels. They're here as well to support you. Mr. Nguyen?
Yeah, good evening. So on the left side, you're gonna see the student at Mount Daniel right now. We currently have 288 students, and we have 215 iPad 2. And we're gonna do the Apple trade-in for those device on the middle column right there, student device that we're gonna trade in. And at TJ, the elementary school, the current student is 830, and the laptop for the year 2012 was 542. And they've been using share card program over there for, they have 21 card, but they have 36 classrooms, so they've been sharing the laptop card. They also have 250 iPad 2 device that on the iPad card, they've been sharing, and total device, they have a 792 device that they have. So we're gonna put on that in for Apple trade-in. So I've been, for the TJ and Mount Daniel iPad card, I've been ranking 30% of grade A and 35% of grade B, and 35% of grade C. So the total for the own iPad 2 that we're gonna trade in, we're gonna get back $26,523. And for the own laptop, that 2012 model from TJ, we're gonna trade in, we're gonna get $109,720 in total trade-in for the own device of 2012. It's total $136,000 and $243. Currently at MEH, on the left right there, and actually, on the right side is 2017 and 2018 for the next years. Mount Daniel, we're gonna have 300 iPad. They request to have 300 iPad Air 2. On the left side, at MEH and GM, we current, at MEH, we currently have 599 student, and we have 630 laptop the year 2014. And at GM, we have, current student is 811, and the laptop is 840. And we're gonna take those device, and we're gonna do the physical audit process, which is, we're gonna choose the best laptop out of those 1,470 device. We're gonna transfer to TJ 913 to maintain the sharing card program of 30, we try to buy 50 more card to maintain the share card program at TJ. And we're gonna keep 200 device for the district for spare and loaners. The rest of it, we're gonna do the trade-in for 357 device. That add up to 103,000 for the total trade-in. And next year, at MEH, we're gonna, with the current student plus 10%, the future growth of student, they request for 660, the estimate for 660 laptop, a new laptop. And GM is 892 new laptop for the next 2007, 2018. And the next slide here is, I have a teacher laptop trade-in. We totally have 150 requests that they wanna upgrade from 11-inch model, 2012 and 2014 model. They have 150, on the 2014, we have 77 device, and 2012, we have a 73 device. And we're gonna do the trade-in, and it calculated up total trade-in is 39,000. And we're gonna upgrade a staff laptop for 150 teachers to 13-inch device for the next refresh cycle. So the total, I have it up to, for own the legacy trade-in device that for the own, the 2012 and 2014 laptop, the TJ and Mount Daniel own iPad, GM and MEH trade back in, the total trade-in estimate, we're gonna get back is 278,337. That's all.
All right, can you just scroll back down, Deng, for me, back to the first, for the, to the first page, to your slide. Scroll up, I'm sorry. And I just want to point out that with the Mac Airs that we have, that we're still being able to trade in those units for $225, which says it holds its value. We, yesterday, in our conversation, we went on eBay just to see how much, if we were to go to eBay for Chromebook, and it came up, we could trade in a $350 Chromebook for $67 versus, I think it was right around 700, and still the Mac Air has the $225 value. One of the other things that I'd like to point out is, today, Mr. Nguyen went back out to, to negotiate our lease price, pricing, and we did get another reduction in that. And right now, it's 342,000, right around $343,000 per year for four years. So, but with that, if you look at the 278 trade-in estimate and the 342, there would be some, some, you know, offset this year with, with this. Of course, this is one-time money, because we wouldn't be trading in devices every, every year. But this would be a one-time cost savings to us, and we can determine whether it offsets the, the current Mac, new Mac Airs, or if it's offset something else in the budget.
And the current, and the current quote is with for more hardware.
That's right.
Than we ordered three years ago.
Yes, please, yes.
And the current quote is a four-year lease purchase, not a three-years.
I have a question. Does, does that also include the teacher laptops?
Yes.
This will include the 150 that's been requested by teachers.
Okay, thank you.
And we gave teachers an opportunity to say if they, they felt that they wanted an upgrade or not, and we had 150 who requested that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I have the mouse?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, thanks. Can I just ask a quick question? What, what does the four-year do to the trade-in value? The, the trade-in?
The future trade-in.
Yeah, exactly. Is it, I assume it's set, well, in advance, right, or?
And it really depends on the model. I mean, the, the level, whether it's grade A, grade B, grade C, as far as what we're returning. You know, grade C would be the, you'd get the lowest cost back for. So depending on the level of the device at the end of the four-year, would determine what the estimate would be, the condition of the laptop.
Do they spell that out at the time of the lease, or do they just say, we'll, we'll give you a?
Market price.
It's market price.
All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
And it's a different company that provides?
Yeah, it's a partner of Apple, so they're gonna come here, and they pick up all the device, and they're gonna go to their warehouse and assess it, and give us a check after they, every single device is right out, the condition of it.
And the breakdown is right there, the A, B, and C.
Yeah.
So there is another year of usage, might drop them down to another, another grade?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Okay, so the grades are simply how long you own them?
No.
No.
No, the condition of the laptop.
We have decided this is what we think the conditions are, right?
Yeah, it's an estimate, yeah.
Yeah, we, we had a webinar with the company and talked about the different grades, to determine what we, and then Deng and his team went in and looked at the devices that we would be trading in, and made the, made the determination that's where we felt they would fall.
Right? Yep. The next page is on your packet. It's just some information about the Tech Advisory Committee. We had a great, two, we had two very busy months in October, November, where we had a great group of parents who volunteered their evenings, and many staff members who joined us for four meetings to discuss the School Board goal of reconvening the Advisory Board, to discuss device choice, and then also answer any of the questions the community has. So I just wanted to share with you the agendas of what we accomplished, or what we covered. The little hyperlink, part of your package, will link, let me click on it, oh, it's not clickable, will take you to the website that was built, that has all of this information, including all the presentations that we made on each of the days. That presentation includes Dr. Jones' presentation of how the budget has, technology budget over the five years. I believe she presented it to you also, but it's there too. But these were the conversations. One of the things, and Lisa's not here, but she tried, she worked with me very hard to make sure we, we, we tried our best with this community, committee. But it found, it became very apparent that we needed to pivot very quickly. We spent our first meetings really talking about devices, trying to, you know, ensure parents that we are, we have the right device, and what we're doing with this device is awesome. And what we found, based on the surveys that we submitted at the end of each meeting, we found that the parents that were coming to these meetings really wanted to talk about education, classrooms, pedagogy. They just didn't want to talk about the device. And so we pivoted very quickly into the November month, and that's when we started doing less presenting and more conversations. And on the website, and part of your packet, is all the work, the working groups did. The way we organized the, the committee was, parents had the, the opportunity to sign up for a different working group based on levels. So there was a primary, elementary, middle, and high. And then the parents could submit questions ahead of time. And those questions were addressed by those working groups. So in the following pages in this packet, you'll see all of those questions that every parent submitted, and the answers the working groups came up with, the consensus, the, the, some of the, some of the answers that are on this document was clearly a team effort. It wasn't just one person coming over the answer. It was the group of parents, the educators, and the administrators. Part of the last responsibility on November 16th was determine two or three themes that would move us through 2017. And those themes kind of emerged themselves into our next committee, committee meetings. And February 8th is going to be our first, we're gonna reconvene in February 8th, and we're gonna discuss the topic of balance. We're gonna have a panel of educators from each of the school, address questions and concerns about how we are measuring, or how we're determining balance at each of our schools. And the rest of the, the topics are up there. We hope, the, the goal of these is to have more of a conversational tenor, where you come in and we have conversations, and you get to ask the questions of the administrators and the teachers that are in the building. For example, March 8th will hopefully be attended by our certs, because they can ask the question, answer the question of the curriculum and how the instruction is, how technology is being integrated in everything we do now. And then policy and planning and support will become more of a, an administrative kind of district-wide conversation. Is there any questions about Tech Advisory Committee? And please, it is, there tends to be a lot of pages here. And, and it is on the website also, but this is the hard work that all our committees put together, all the parents, and as I mentioned, the teachers worked on. So I'm just gonna skip over those. If there's any questions, if you see any of the, the questions in there that you want clarification for, we can try our best to do that for you. And this is the, this is a infographic that we've handed out before, but I'm gonna hand out again. And this is just more about the technology, frequency asked questions. And we put this together at George Mason, but a lot of the schools were using it with their faculties. And this just kind of addressed some of the questions that the board had posed to us in the beginning of the year. For example, there was conversations about BYOD. There were some questions about what the DLT, or the Digital Learning Team was. So I just lend, give you another copy of this infographic, just for your information. We did a little bit of information about the Chromebook, because that was on the conversation at the time, as kind of looking at both of those devices to see a cost analysis, a user analysis type of thing. The next infographic, which you may not have seen yet, is what I call the Software Showdown. And this is where we really took a look at what the Mac and the Chromebook, it's in both packets?
It's in the packets?
Yes.
Thanks.
Please, take it. It's basic.
Pass it up to the audience.
Oh, yeah, you wanna pass it around? It basically was taking a look at what, because you've heard, and we've had a lot of teachers, even tonight, we had teachers and kids talk about the value of the MacBook. It's, it is a more expensive device, but what does it give us? It gives us a lot of free software. And so what I tried to do is break down what that software looks like compared to devices. But I do want to call to the attention the top part of this Software Showdown, and that is, when we think about, when we're making the move to another device, we need to keep in mind, are we enhancing, are we preparing, and are we giving a device that equalizes, or gives our students equitable access to technology? So you can take a look at that. I'm happy to answer any questions about it. You've heard a few things even tonight, iMovie, GarageBand. Those are very powerful Apple software that's got, it just improves every year. They run updates. When we did a comparison, what would we, if we had to go online only, with an, with not a computer, not a laptop, but an online device like a Chromebook, that was the breakdown of how much we'd have to pay in order to have the same, the same capabilities of the software that we already have native on the device. We are doing more of this, and I'm very proud of the iBook Author piece, because we are moving towards midterms at the high school. And there are more and more teachers that are using iBook Author to, as their midterm, you know, create an online book or portfolio of all the things you're proud of. And that's what they submit for their grade. This is an amazing native, native software that is, there is no online version that is available. Lager Pro, just a little information for you there. It's just more of, this is where most of all, all our science classes in the middle school and high school have invested in probe ware. And the probe ware needs to plug into a laptop that is running Lager Pro. There is no online version to plug into an online-only device. So we'd have to reinvest in our probe ware, or find another way of measuring all of that data using another system. Ms. Rice and the audience mentioned the Photoshop and the Illustrator, the Adobe packages we have. We are, we have, because we have the Mac, we have the ability of giving the industry standard software for some of these careers. Most of our students that are in video production classes are using Premiere, which is the industry standard for video production. And so we have those tools and those abilities. Because I wanted to be a little fair, there is a free version online that we could do some of the photo and the drawing, and that's Pixlr, run by AutoCAD. So there are, you know, free options in some of our instances. And the last one, even though it only affects about 150 of our students every year, that is the Computer Science Program. And right now, we program in Java, and you cannot program in Java on a web-only device. And so we, we have to rely on some kind of cloud-based service. CodeEnvy happens to be the only one that's really out there now. And they are working to, and that price is not even available yet. They're kind of floating out the market to see if education is a worthy place to invest. So if CodeEnvy decides education is a good place, then we would pay $30 per year for an online service to replace Eclipse, which is a free download. May I answer any questions about? Same as my, my understanding is that Eclipse places some special demands on the devices that they have to be configured and sometimes they have to be re-imagined more frequently. I could be wrong about this, but does, is there anything about what Eclipse does and how it does it that we should be aware of? It's, one of the things that we, we reached out to some other schools that do computer science programs. And because we, our computer science is in the Java language, which is, you know, the beginning language that our teacher uses. Most school districts that run a, have Chromebooks, have to have computer labs. So they have to have a computer with higher processing power. They have to have a computer, a laptop, a desktop. I can't say it enough that a Chromebook is not a laptop. So it doesn't have the abilities that a laptop would. So yes, that's one of the challenges of computer science on a web-only device is that you would have to figure out ways to either pay a lot of money for an online service or provide a computer lab for those classes. So their PC, Windows machine, Apple machine, it really needs to be laptop when you're programming.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
Just, I'm holding my questions to the very end, so rather than doing it person by person.
The last thing was the letter from the George Mason staff. I just wanted to throw that in the packet. It does a great job of saying how, you know, it's become, and I think Jen Jason said it best, it is our air, it is our oxygen. It's integrated so many places, it's just, it's hard to imagine a George Mason without the devices we have. That is the end of the packet.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Swanson to come up and share some information about use at Thomas Jefferson at the elementary level.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. It's our understanding that there were, I think, some very legitimate and important questions about a level of balance regarding these devices. How much do kids use these devices, at least at TJ? And then also, what do teachers think about this? I want to share with you just three pieces of information very briefly. The first page that you see in front of you is a survey that we did of teachers about two and a half months or so ago. And let me also hedge my bets a little bit by emphasizing that the averages that you see in front of you, they vary for all kinds of reasons. They vary from teacher to teacher, they vary from week to week based on curriculum, units of inquiry and what things are doing. But ballpark figure, ballpark figure, you're looking from second to fifth grade, an average ballpark figure of around 28 to 40 minutes a day. Bear in mind that our instructional day is somewhere in the neighborhood, what, five, five and a half hours, something like that. So ballpark figure, we're talking about on average, kids looking at an individual device anywhere from 30 to around 40 minutes a day. Second page that I've shared with you is a survey that we administered to our professional staff two days ago. And we wanted to gauge from them, what is your preference regarding technology? And then also, what is your sense of the correlation between technology and student learning? And I think the results speak for themselves here. It is noteworthy that we had 50 staff members that responded to this survey. And 50 of them said that there is a significant correlation between technology and student learning. Not one staff member, not one doubted that. And then the third page asks teachers, what would be your preference regarding accessibility of technology for you? And roughly 56% of the staff said that it would be their desire to host a cart of MacBook Airs or iPads. Honestly, MacBook Airs would be the preference at TJ. To host one cart in their classroom, roughly 44% indicated that they could make do sharing. And again, I would emphasize to you that of the 50 professional staff that work with children every single day, not one, zero, not one, said that they did not wish for technology. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Swanson, I think it was at the initial budget presentation a couple of weeks ago, you were speaking about a project, it had to do with, I think, constructing virtual dwellings that previously had been done on a worksheet. And, and so there's a qualitative aspect to what technology can do. But also, some present the choice of technology and personnel as a binary one. In your experience, does technology enhance the productivity of teachers and increase their impact and effectiveness by, you know, enabling students to do work on devices as the teacher provides individualized instruction? And what would be lost if you didn't have that?
There's no question about it. There's no question about it. Let me give you some specific examples. One of the things that this district has prided itself justifiably is our integration of personalized learning. So if you go into a given classroom in any grade level at TJ for language arts, for instance, you will see teachers doing guided reading. And that's where you will very seldom see whole class instruction, but instead you might have a group of four or five kids around a kidney-shaped table, working with the teacher. Meantime, the rest of the kids are going to be doing a variety of tasks that are relevant to their academic needs and then also just the standards. And it is very common, very common, that we will make use of technology during those times to minister to kids. So if we were to completely withdraw technology from TJ and to some degree, if we were not to expand it, there would be direct implications for that, that in my view would be very negative regarding our ability to do personalized learning as effectively as we can. Other questions? Ms. Gill?
How does, how does technology help our English as a second language students? Is it used?
I would just want to piggyback and say also special ed because I wanted to ask about both.
Yeah, is it, is it used specifically for those?
In terms of special ed, I don't think that Mrs. Germer is here. I think she can speak to that much more authoritatively than I can. But yeah, I know that it is for, for any number of our kids, kids with disabilities, that there is a technological component to some of their accommodations, whether it is doing things with audio and whatnot. So yeah, there is that implication. In terms of ESOL, I think that ESOL kids probably benefit from technology much in the same way that general ed kids do. And again, I think our ESOL teachers could speak to that more authoritatively frankly than I can.
And I can speak to the special ed piece. Ms. Germer, we were, Ms. Germer with funding, I forget where it came from, but we made, the first iPads in the district were purchased for special education program. And one of the things we did, they were iPad ones, it was almost six years ago. And her faculty, her staff of special educators were just so excited about having access to all the apps. That has continued. So even though the iPads have, we're now into iPad twos, the iPads, I know for especially Mount Daniel, they're just integral to the programs of special ed, when the special ed teachers are working with the kids. It's just, it's a big part of it. I know, it's an elementary question or was it a K-12 question for?
Well, I was thinking specifically about TJ, but it's helpful to hear.
And I would say also, the adaptive components that are, that are on the MacBook Airs. For example, there's allows for screen readers. There are times when a student needs something to help them read or focus. That's a program that is on that computer. And as far as ESOL, there are times when, you know, we are making sure that those students who are emerging, are striving to make academic rigor, we want to make sure that they have a double dose. So they're working with the teacher in small groups. They may work with the ESOL specialist as well in a small group. And then there are times when they are on a program that is, is set for them at their level to help them build their language acquisition and help them, you know, take them from where they are and build them. And the computer adaptive programs for those students, you know, are able to maintain exactly where they stopped one day to the next day so that they don't have to go back. And it, and it will spiral if the, if the student, you know, knew it yesterday and doesn't know it today, it will go back and, and reteach or help to give them practice in that skill that they need. So it definitely focuses on, and I know we use it in our after-school TOPS program as well, just to make sure that we, they're, they're engaged all the time and it's not where they're just sitting on something that it's, we try to make sure it's an engaging tool or program when they're using it.
Yeah, I think one of the programs that Mrs. Hi is talking about, it's called Imagine Learning. And what we've done, our protocol is for our ESOL kids, the recommendation of Imagine Learning is just 25 minutes a day. Spend 25 minutes a day. And we've already seen pretty significant gains that would be more than happy to provide this board from a lot of those kids.
Thank you.
You bet.
And one other thing I just want to just remind the school board as they're, you know, thinking and making decisions is that in third, fourth and fifth grade, our students are required to use technology, use the computer for testing. And, you know, having them not have experience using that and having to go wherever to be prepared that day would just be really unfair to them if they don't have that ability to use it throughout the school year and practice using the mouse and being able to even have some released test items and be able to practice, you know, moving up toward the testing date. So that's something that I also want you to keep in mind is that we don't have an option unless it is for a student who can't use the, use the computer for some reason. They are, every student needs to be able to use technology to take their SOL tests and that's a state requirement.
And that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's more critical even now because of the, the technology enhanced kind of questions. I mean, there's more click and drag and click, you know, click and drag kind of thing. And, you know, kids, especially kids who may be in the home with an iPad or more touchscreen, knowing that they're going to be taking a test on a laptop, they need some experience with the trackpad, the clicking and the dragging and all of that good stuff.
And the point that I think Mrs. Hi raised, this is not, this is not theoretical. I know a little bit about this. I came from Indiana and in the last several years, we had gone to online testing. And what we perennially see is that there are two parts of that online testing. There is a multiple choice section, but then there are questions that are called technology enhanced. And they are exactly as Mr. Knight has said. And what we see in Indiana statewide is that there is a significant gap between the percentage of mastery on multiple choice questions relative to technology enhanced. Why is that? Because they are addressing essentially the same standards. And educational statisticians have speculated that the kids that are missing those technology enhanced questions, it's not because they don't know the material, it's because they didn't know how to use the software. This made national news in Indiana. This is a real thing.
And then the one other thing that I do want to point out, I know that you received, I think, on last Friday, the computer technology standards of learning that come from the VDOE. And when you look at the first one for grades K-2, it says, use various types of technology devices to perform learning tasks using the keyboard, the mouse, the touchscreen, the touchpad and other devices to interact with the computer. So just not only is it a false church initiative, the Virginia Department of Education requires that we make sure that our students are prepared for, for these as we move forward. Now, do they provide an SOL test on technology? No. But in order for them to be successful taking the standards of learning test, they need to be able to do these things, so.
Any other questions?
When we get to the end.
Yeah, we're, we're at the end.
All right. So I feel like we spent a little bit of time knocking down straw men in the sense that I don't think anybody's really talking about eliminating laptops from our environment. And we've not completely accepted the fact that we lived in a resource constrained environment. I mean, it would be great to give everybody MacBook Pros as opposed to MacBook Airs. But the question is, what's the best cost benefit analysis? And how do we match pedagogy with pedag- pedagogy with what we can afford? Sorry, that's not a word that comes naturally to me. So, and it's not a question of whether our kids need to know how to use computers, it's a question about how computers should be used in education. And I think those are different. I doubt we're going to graduate any kids that don't know how to use computers. So, and I'd also note that there's a, you know, there is a difference between all of these different devices, you know, absolutely the Macs are more powerful than the Chromebooks. That's why the Chromebooks are cheaper. That's why for the cost of a MacBook lease, you could probably buy a new Chromebook every year that we wanted for everybody and just give them a new computer every year for roughly the same cost. But that's not to say that we want to do the switchover at all. It just means that we want to look at what the advantages are. And, you know, for all the values that Macbooks have, you know, all the work that we're projecting up here tonight is on a Windows machine. You know, the, my kids do all of their homework on a Chromebook because that's what I, the computer I've got for them at home and they're at MEH and so they don't have, you know, I have a Mac at home that I use for work. And I, I run a nonprofit. I bought Macs for all of my people because they needed it for what they did. But that's the question I think we've got to answer. What do you need for what you did, for what the kids need to do? And there's a lot of data up here, but I think there's a little bit more we need to make a fully informed decision. I'd also agree, by the way, with what Ms. Kleinman said, that, you know, I don't think, this is something you want to kick down the year for and say, we're just going to keep what we've got. Because I agree with her very much that this is the sort of thing, having been in government for much of my adult life, that when a program goes away, it never comes back. So what I think we want to do is we want to make sure we have a sustainable approach. And I think right now, we're in the position that, you know, the switchover to anything but Macs, certainly for the high school and maybe for the high school and the middle school, is something that probably is too much to bear because a lot of work would have to be done and we'd have to get ready for it. But I want to make sure we're staying fully informed about that and we make that decision in an informed way. So getting to questions. There are some things also, by the way, that Macs can't do. For example, we need Windows machines for Cyber Patriot, I believe, right? Is that right, Steve?
We do, only because we were concerned with security. We can completely run a virtual machine on a Mac and we're going to have a conversation with Mr. Nguyen about next year because right now, our Cyber Patriot team of 45 students are really at a disadvantage because we don't have PCs to give them. And so they have Macs, they can completely use the Macs for the competition. The Air Force Association will allow them to use the Macs. It's just figuring out how to give them the virtual access to the computer image they have to work on in a secure environment. And that's why we made the decision not to use the Macs at the time. We hope to have more conversations about finding more opportunity for the students to use their Macs because it's an equity issue. We have, Ms. Hi happened to visit us on Friday during our state competition and we had a couple of teams that were at a real disadvantage because they were using PC lap, Windows laptops that are, I think, eight years old at this point. And they were at a, they were at a disadvantage to the other geeks who brought their computers that they built with their liquid coolant and their lights inside. So they were at a, so we are looking at ways to, whichever device the high school has, we're looking at ways to make sure that it's equitable.
So I think the concerns spill down. I don't think there's much concern anymore among parents at George Mason. I think the concerns at Mary Ellen Henderson used to be more about how the, how the program, how the computers were used in teaching. I think the progress we've made over the last three years has really substantially mitigated that. And, you know, my kids are in eighth grade now. They're in a much better place in terms of how the computers are used than when they were in sixth grade and the computers were first rolled out. But there's still, you know, I think, Steve, the work that you're doing in the technical advisory committee is actually going to answer a lot of the questions about how, how these things are used and addressing parent questions. But at MEH, the concern is still around monitoring because the computers don't come home and making sure parents are able to monitor usage and control usage the way they can at home, which they can do more at George Mason than they can at MEH, really. And I think in elementary school, it's more about, I mean, there's still parents that really, you know, like Jesse Thackeray in particular, maybe Mount Daniel, don't want their kids using iPads at all. And on occasion have told teachers, don't use them. There's a concern more about screen time, even for people that don't mind the occasional use. And so I think more assurance around that would be helpful. So the kinds of things I'd like to see, oh, by the way, just one other thing, you don't need at least to convince me and I don't think, I haven't heard any other board. need at least to convince me, and I don't think, I haven't heard any other board member talk about it, that we need to have BYOD. I heard Ms. Dana's comments on that. You know, I think BYOD, well, I appreciate that we have a city full of people that could afford it. From a teaching perspective, I think that's a nightmare. And from an administration perspective, for dang, dang, I think that's a total nightmare. So, you know, you think we've got malware problems now. So I like, I think we need to see a sort of a real comparison of the cost and benefit. And a lot of the data is here, but it hasn't really been put forward in a way. So we have a, you know, a notion of what the amount is, but that I don't think was, the dollar amount wasn't written on the paper we got. And you have the trade-ins. But it'd be good to see sort of the cost breakout and what the set off would be the first year, at least for sort of the full, you know, if this is the full MacBook program you've laid out, that's kind of the, and it's clearly what teachers desire, it's the most capable thing. But we ought to look and see what the other costs are and what we'd lose if we went to other pieces. I think the far other end is what would it cost if we switched to Chromebooks entirely? And I suspect it's about a third to a little more than a third of the cost. And I think that the disruption now would probably be greater, but I think we ought to see what that is, and then weigh of the cost and advantages. And then the piece that I really would be interested in is the, sort of the middle piece, which is, what if we don't, and this may be a bad idea, I just, it's hard for me to weigh the cost and benefits until I see it. What if we don't buy seven years of MacBook Airs, but we put by four years of MacBook Airs and transfer the pieces down and use, yes, we would use three-year-old laptops for three to four years for MEH. And I don't know if that's going to be a big problem or not. I know that there's a plan to move a bunch of the laptops down to TJ, but I don't, it doesn't really, if they're spares, I think it's fine. But if they're not spares, it doesn't sound to me like all the data that like we need a cart with a one-to-one laptop for every kid at TJ. If the average is 30 minutes of use a day, then you could get away with shared carts. And even the survey that was done didn't say, "What do you need?", it said, "What do you desire?". Because as I would teach, I'd love, I'd desire a cart of full MacBook. So that middle piece of, you know, what would the cost and benefits be? At least to hear from the teachers what the costs would be if we did that, in terms of, you know, continuing older lapbooks, sorry, MacBooks at MEH, and what the difference is, I think would go a long way towards addressing the issues that I still have.
I can, we can kind of respond to the older the computers get, because one of the things, and this is a Windows device versus any device, is that as the years go on, the battery's half-life. And the battery technology, unfortunately, is not to the point where it can run all day, although the 13-inch says it can. So one of the things we are concerned about is if we use older infrastructure, how do we charge the devices in the buildings? And right now, even on our third year at George Mason, we have kids bringing their chargers more, even though we ask them not to. Students are bringing their chargers, and the last block of the day is a little bit of spider web kind of limbo jumping around the classroom. And so we're recognized, and that also directly relates to how some of the students are using very intense programs with processing. For example, our video production students, I mean, they can't survive two blocks with a battery, 100% battery, because they're running video software. So that's one of the things we're concerned about.
That's a really good answer. I had not thought about that at all, and that makes a lot of sense.
So I know our colleagues at the middle school, that was one of their biggest challenges because they didn't invest in any charging stations throughout the building, it was carts. So they really rely on making sure that thing lasts till the end of the day so it can get back to the cart at the end. So that's one of the concerns we have, even with, as we move forward, if we decided to use them for another year. I think the battery technology in the Macs are getting a little bit better. And dang, you explained to me that there was a different level of battery technology in the newest model?
Yeah, the 2014 model, they have a Haswell chipset that consume less energy. But the 2012 TJ right now, that's the old laptop, six-years model, I mean, four-years model, is the battery life is just bad. I mean, the new one is much better, that's why.
And so as the technology improves, and that's, you know, that's one of the critical pieces of replacing and having a replacement cycle. The battery technology is going to be better in the 2016s, and they might last us to four years. But even if we decide the four-year, then we can prepare our buildings and our students to be ready for that fourth year and have an extra charger, or have more charging stations within the school classrooms, so we can accommodate that better. So that was the one, just about the cost that we may see if we keep the devices a little longer. At the elementary schools with a 20 or 30 or 45-minute use, those go right back into the cart to charge for the next user. So that, the battery is not, the battery life is not as important.
I think that's, like I said, that's a really good answer. I still would like to see the breakdown of what the cost would be, you know, the year-over-year, what the cost is, year one, year two, and year three, under the current lease with the trade-ins, what we project out for year two and year three, and what it would be, just to make a judgment. And I think you've made a compelling argument that you need new laptops for MEH because of the battery issue, and that makes imminent sense to me. The last thing I have, this is completely on the other side, I want to make sure 150 laptops is enough, because I know in the past, we've had, for example, some paras using 10-year-old Dells. And that just, you know, that doesn't, I don't think, work if you're going to ask, if a para is involved in, you know, helping teach a classroom, and she or he is trying to do something at the same time as the kids, and, you know, the kids get it done in five seconds, and the para's teacher takes an hour to do the job, that, it's a really silly use of resources when you could spend, you know, really rounding error in dollars to make sure everybody's got up-to-date equipment. So let's make sure if we're giving our teachers, our students, a set of equipment, that the teachers have access to the same equipment so that they can do the same thing at the same time. And that includes paras and anybody else who needs access. So let's not scamp on the teacher and admin piece for the student piece. That's just the one caution I've got.
I know that we're very, we're looking forward to the fact that we're pulling down, because if, on here, and we want to make everyone definitely feel better, that not all of the computers from the middle school and high school are going to TJ. We are shaving a lot of them off, but this flexibility, the 200 loners and even more if we decide that we need them, we are looking forward to that relief at our schools because we are getting, TJ has a stack that, you know, need to be repaired. We do have, and I'm glad you brought that up, our para professionals have requested to have access to technology, and this will provide us relief. Even though it'll be a 2014 machine, it's a very viable machine, it still works really well. And most of our faculty, when we surveyed the faculty, we were prepared to replace all 250 MacBooks for the faculty. But when we surveyed them, we, there were a lot of faculty that said, "I'm fine with what I got." So they may have a 2011, 2012, they're fine with what they have, they're not power users like the 150 that requested a new one. So we will have some flexibility in that.
Just one final point on that. Thank you. My whole concern is that we have a sustainable approach, that we do something now that we can continue to do, going back to what Ms. Kleinman said. And so let's just make sure that we know that if we're giving, if we're using old laptops for teachers or paras, that that's not just this year, that's likely in three years as well. So I just, that needs to be made clear that we, because it just makes a lot more sense to do this on a refresh cycle than to have multiple purchases every time, at least to me, because you get better deals that way.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question about technology use at MEH. Could you describe what that's like? I don't see laptop carts, is it, do the students come in and take a computer every day and use it all day?
Yeah, it's a one-to-one, it's a one-to-one that doesn't go home. So yes, the students go to homeroom, they grab their computer that was charged overnight, and then they use that to carry along for the day. I'm not so clear if they take it back to homeroom for lunch and let it charge. I think kids have that ability to make sure it's charged there. And then they pick it up and they carry it to their specials, all their classes.
Okay.
And then we do have, I forget what we call them, the George Mason Scholars?
Ambassadors.
Ambassadors?
Yeah, that's what Mr. Hill said back there.
The kids that are taking high school credit.
Oh, scholars.
So those students are, can take their middle school laptops home because they're taking high school classes.
Okay.
And I believe that's around 20, 25 kids. So those students take them home, and then they have, they actually were given, they have the most recent, and they have a charger, and they, so there's a few kids that take it home.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ciel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question about Mount Daniel and reading instruction. I know there's been talk about bringing Waterford back, and is that something that's going on, and are there any device implications for that?
I mean, the last I heard, and I have not checked in with Erin Kelly lately, but Waterford was still in beta, so it wasn't where we could have it right now for iPads. Laura was back, I don't know if she has any more. Laura, do you know any about Waterford?
I don't think it's fully available.
Yeah, I don't think it's fully available still. But we will be having a conversation, because last year, iStation did go away, and teachers have been using free apps this year. But there needs to be a conversation soon as to what, if anything, we're going to bring back. But right now, Waterford is not available, to my knowledge.
For iPad or for anything at all?
For anything.
Mr. Nkoma?
So I'm going to play devil's advocate, and I think Mr. Writingham may have asked my question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Given the budget environment, what if, your ask is what, $400,000 approximately?
$342,000 per year.
Okay.
For four-year lease.
What if, and I'm going to be very blunt, you don't get it this year? What's your backup plan?
We got to buy more device to replace what a broken device that we have, broken device at TJ. We don't have device to give, we keep buying 1010 to start giving like MEH or GM the loners. We don't have enough device to provide to the students.
And I say that because Mr. Writingham raised a good point about sharing. Given what Mrs. Swanson said about usage times, I'm thinking, especially, I would say, the lower grades, not that I have anything against the lower grades, but if they don't use it as much as the higher grades, could they share, could they have more of a plan to share and therefore have fewer lap, fewer devices? I don't know if it's laptops or whatever. I don't know what the trade-in dollars would help with some of that, but I'm just playing devil's advocate and saying, we didn't get $932,000 last year. What if you don't get this 350 this year? What do you do?
Well, it definitely will impact instruction. I know you talked about sharing at TJ. Because of our blocks of the day, our, you know, specials, and when teachers are teaching a certain subject, so what would happen if they have to share between two or three classrooms? Then during the language arts block, there are going to be some students who need access during the small group reading and having stations to go to that will not be able to access, so that will impact their instructional day. So if we have to, right now, it's one cart between two classrooms is what we have now. But if we, you know, if there are some that are broken and we can't replace any, then we're going to go to three or four. And sometimes that interrupts instruction, because if it's in this teacher's classroom and someone else needs it, in order to go in, you've got 24 kids or 23 kids coming into the classroom to pick up those laptops. So there will be instructional impact. What we'll do, I mean, we do what we have to do, but it will impact our kids.
Yeah. And Michael, from a, you know, purely financial standpoint, and I've kind of looked at this, and there are a number of different scenarios and possibilities out there. You know, just take an example, the current three-year, Apple, at least for the equipment that we have right now at MEH and GM, there's an annual cost of $372,000 for that annual lease. This is the last year of that three-year lease. So next year would mark the beginning, if we were to enter into a new lease purchase agreement, that would represent year one. We're planning on doing that right now, going to a four-year, and not only refreshing at MEH and GM, but also because Mount Daniel has requested a different type of machine than the Mac Airs, the iPad.
iPad, too.
iPads, yes. That they specifically, that they believe that that's a more appropriate device for their type of instruction. And we also are getting those 150 for the teachers. So what we're doing is we'd be getting more equipment, doing a four-year lease purchase, and as Dang found out this afternoon, the price would actually be around $342. So we would be looking at $30,000 savings, assuming that, per year, assuming that those funds were available. Now, if the board said, "Well, you know, let's just take the whole $372 out", what, you know, what does that leave us with? Basically, we would have $154,000 that we've been getting every year from the Commonwealth of Virginia, they issue bonds, and then the proceeds go to school divisions based on their size and number of schools. And our number has been and continues to be $154,000. Because the funds are provided by bond issuance, we can't use those for a lease arrangement. We have to, we have to go out and buy equipment with it. In working with Dang and his predecessor, Rick, the plan next year for the state money, that 154, we've been looking at actually replacing servers and firewalls, more infrastructure sorts of things, wireless access points, desktop computers. We can just outright purchase those. So, you know, if the 372, which is now down to 342, were not available next year, I think we would, what we would have to do logically is regroup and start to assess, okay, what do we have now? You know, do we just, you know, keep it for next year? What do we replace? Is there anything we could sell and then take the proceeds and then buy something with it? You know, we would be scrambling, there's not really a definitive answer, but, you know, ostensibly, one could take, say, use the 154 from the state to purchase, you know, student and teacher laptops with. That being said, you're then not meeting the needs of the network that supports all of this. So it's kind of a tough question. It would have to be sitting down and regrouping and doing priorities, and just to see about hanging on to older equipment. And as Dang said, some of the equipment, I mean, we're going to have to go out and buy and replace because some of it's very old and dying.
So for what it's worth, Dan, could you prepare a doomsday scenario in addition to what Mr. Writingham is asking? Because you had some, you wanted to see some...
I wanted to see a little bit of a breakdown. The other thing, Mr. Nkoma, that I'd note that we haven't talked about very much, other than one brief moment, is there, it doesn't help in year two and year three, but the plan does, you know, if projections are correct, result in a trade-in of about $280,000 that would not need to be in the budget for technology this year, or, you know, or would become back as general revenue. So that's going to help to close immediate one-year needs, if not longer-term pieces.
So I hear you, but I still would like to see that, what that would look like. Because I'm coming from a perspective of, there are other competing needs in the school system, and I'm finding out more about non-technology, classroom facilities, I mean, teachers using their money to support programs, parents paying for stuff that the school should be doing, and that's starting to concern me, and I guess we'll discuss those on a later date. But I am yet to be sold on another outright lease when other needs, which have been disregarded or not heard about or addressed, are still out there, you know. So, you know, this may not be the place, but we're not voting on this yet, so.
Okay. And if I could just throw in and put a plug in for the lease, and I will provide these data for the board, because I've pulled together historic technology spending in FCCPS over the last seven or eight years. And it's interesting, because what it shows is that our spending for hardware, over time, we had this series of peaks and valleys where we would run out and buy computers, and then, you know, they would last for two, three, four years, and then would start to die, and then we'd have to go out, run out, and buy a whole bunch of computers again, too. And so every three or four years, we were scrambling, you know, to find money, and do we pay for it out of the capital budget, this sort of thing. What the lease has done is provided us the ability to get, to get the same equipment, level the playing field for, you know, for the students and the teachers, all upfront, that we're not buying this type this year, this... upfront, that we're not buying this type this year, this type next year, this type in the third year. And then to be able to have a very steady method for paying that is very predictable, so we know what the cost of the equipment will be. So, I mean, I, I understand your concerns. However, I, I don't think the lease leasing process or instrument itself, I mean, it's, it's been very, very valuable from a financing standpoint and a budgeting standpoint, and I would just like to make that plug.
Absolutely. But again, I will say, it's, in a sense, it's, in my mind, to the detriment of certain other parts of the school system, which have no voice and are not getting any support. So, that's my two cents.
Mr. Castillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to put a finer point on what Mr. Writinger said, I think what would be good is if we treated some of our technology the way we do buses and have like a life cycle plan for the next X years. Like what's end of life this year, what's going to be end of life next year, what's the anticipated growth? You know, these, these things, we won't get them absolutely on the bullseye right, but we can say, you know, plus or minus 10%. This is where we're seeing, and that could help us to smooth some of these things out.
You want to see the trade-in value after one year's?
No, I want, I basically want to know, like, what, what is the, what is the state of our technology equipment base? And, you know, how much of it is timing out? How much of it has useful life left? Because the, the slide with the pictures of all the devices in the various buildings, they're the 2012 laptops. My, my guess is that that's a way of saying these things are end of life.
Yes.
And so, you know, what is, let's not just look ahead to this year's budget, but, you know, what can we say technology budgets are going to look like next year and the year after? I, I don't know what our discussion about cloud is going to be today, but it seems to me that could have some effect on some of our hardware and procurement and the 150,000 that we get from the state. And, and the last thing that I just want to make sure I understand is, it sounds as if now, if there's a shortage of devices, you'll just do a spot purchase of 10 devices upfront?
Yeah, we, let's say the, the device at TJ is, is broken, it can't, as I know, after the assessment with the trade-in with the company, any device that, that we cannot power on, they're not going to take it back. Let's say a laptop at TJ, if the trade-in value is $200, the next day, they cannot power on, we lose $200. Plus, we have to spend $800 buy a new device to replace that device. So, anything not power on, they're not going to take it back. And they assess on the, the physical, I mean, physical and make sure the device is working properly and the physical damage of the device, that's how they assess the, the laptop.
And the 2014s, remember, are covered by insurance.
Yes.
So, we have all our 2014s, I mean, we have very, we have very minimal loss from that where they couldn't repair it, but our 2014s are going out for insurance coverage. And so, most of those are going out repaired, handed to us, or if they don't repair it, they give us the cash?
Yeah, they reimburse $650 per laptop.
So, my, my question was slightly different, and that's it. Let's say you've decided to lease 300 MacBook Airs.
Okay.
The day after you do that, one breaks. Do you get to call up Apple and say, we'd like to make a lease now for 301 to replace this? Or do you have to go to the market and pay sticker price right upfront for a device?
Well, first of all, I guess it would be, you know, your, I know where you're getting it, but it'd be under warranty.
Well, no, no, but, but.
Say 10 more students show up and you need 10 more.
Right.
10 more computers.
Right.
And generally, in that case, if, if, if my memory serves me correctly, is that what we'll do is if you need a small additional, small number, we've gone out and just, just purchased a, a batch on an as-needed basis, whether, whether they're for loner machines or.
Inroll one.
Or increased student enrollment, those sorts of things.
And, and do those, would there be a way to do those spot buys differently that would reduce cost? Do a mini-lease? Or, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
That's, that's we bought on.
And to be perfect, generally speaking, because, because honestly, in last year, this, this is one of the areas that, that got, that got drained, that got cut, was, was locally-funded computer hardware replacements. When we've had to, had to do this over the past year, we, we've been hitting the, the state funds in order to do this, to make the outright purchases for this.
Because to me, okay, thanks. That helps.
Yeah. And I, and I think really, in terms of, you know, volume, that's, that's where the lease comes in. When you're talking about fewer numbers, it doesn't really make sense. And, and also, the cost is more manageable, that we, we could dip into the state funds and use them appropriately.
Yeah, this just sounds to me as if it's, it's, makes it all the more important to forecast our device lifecycle, because if we get it wrong, we could be faced with some pretty big upfront.
And, and to be honest with you, Mr. Castillo, since FCCPS launched into, you know, technology purchases and replacement cycles, Steve, you were here, remember that spreadsheet I put together and we were trying, yeah, tried to, to track, okay, how many do we have? How old are they? Where are they? And after a couple of years, it became just really very difficult and frankly, I, the accuracy of the information we were keeping really wasn't that good, as far as I can tell. We are light-years ahead in terms of, right, right now, in terms of knowing, okay, this many came in, here are the serial numbers, this is, you know, here's when the warranty, you know, expires. Buying them in huge chunks like this makes, it makes it very much easier. And probably one of the, and I know you've heard this before, one of, one of the best decisions that was made was to, to identify a common device to use across the system, which for, you know, for the use by the, by the classroom teachers, but for repair by the staff, it, it has just, you know, saved a lot of time and made things a lot easier. So, we've moved in that direction as well, which, so, so I, I personally feel that when I go to Dang or Steve or anybody to ask about inventory, they're able, they're able to find answers very, very, very quickly in terms of, okay, how many do we have? How old is it? You know, what's our loss rate? Things like that.
And I think the lease that Dang was working on has a 10%, a, a prediction of a 10% increase. So, we are asking for more computers, because I think we were caught this year with not, we were not expecting the growth at Mason, so we had to make a spot, we had to buy more.
Yeah.
But this lease has a little bit of wiggle room, and then also, we have a little bit of relief if we need to with the old devices to use for loners and repairs, for emergency kind of things. While the 2016s are out for repair, we have older models that we can employ, use.
Ms. Go.
When we were looking at the device structure, is there a reason we didn't compare Windows machines to MacBooks and just did Chromebooks to MacBooks? Because Chromebooks are, I have a Chromebook at home, I use it all the time, but, you know, it's a very different computer than a MacBook, but you could get a comparable Windows laptop for much less than a MacBook.
Not when we looked.
Well, do we look at HPs or?
We look at Dell and HP.
Right.
I didn't know, yeah, because I looked in this information, it looked like we only looked at Chromebooks versus MacBooks. I just wondered if there was a reason why we went that way and if we did also consider Windows machines versus MacBooks.
I mean, when, earlier this year, when we started doing the Technology Advisory Committee, I went out and looked to say, you know, what if we were to get another laptop? But the cost between the Mac and the HP or the Dell, there wasn't that much of a difference. And, you know, as the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and all the professional development that we've put into it to switch to another laptop that cost about the same, just didn't, doesn't make a lot of instructional.
I mean, there's, there's a pretty big price differential between a MacBook and a, maybe even the MacBook Pro and the comparable Dell is like a $400 or $500. I'm just looking it up online. It's like a $400 or $500 difference.
I, I, I can speak.
I don't, I don't need to know that. I just, I just wanted to know why we didn't do that comparison and why we just went right to Chromebook.
The, when we, when we made the decision to go Mac four years ago, we compared PC versus Mac. We had, at the time, Dell was not leasing, so that was one of the, we could not lease from Dell. So, we could not lease. And one of the things I think we have to remember is, one of the reasons I, we, we went Mac is we wanted something that wasn't going to add more weight to the backpack, but make less weight to the backpack. And so, we had to compare a Mac to an UltraBook, a Windows UltraBook. And Windows UltraBooks are still pretty pricey, and especially four years ago, they were exactly a little bit more because we couldn't lease them at the time. We really haven't talked about PC versus Mac because it, we didn't see any savings. It was the conversation that, and it seemed like it was coming from the community to take a look at Chromebooks versus Mac. As for the, the UltraBook prices now, I, I haven't, we haven't done any, we can compare the prices, we can give you an UltraBook, we can give you the same specs, the same RAM, the same memory in a, in a Windows computer, if that's part of the cost analysis.
I mean, I would just question, you know, I, I have nothing against, I really don't have anything against computers, especially at the high school level. But, you know, the question is, do we need the, the Porsche when we aren't a district that can afford it? You know, do we, do we need a Ford? You know, do we need an HP laptop? Like, do we need an UltraBook? I, I know that there are students who do, but I know there are many who don't. So, is there a two-tier device structure in terms of? I'm just trying to think outside of the box, because we do have a lot of competing personnel needs, and it's hard to see students not getting the instructional support they need in favor of a very, the top-of-the-line computer, you know. And, you know, of course, everybody would like to have the best, but when I went to buy a new laptop, I could not buy myself a MacBook, because I didn't have the money for it, so I bought a Chromebook because I could afford it. So, I think about it in terms of school, like, what can we afford and not, what would we love to have? Because I would love to have the best of everything, but there are compromises, so.
Yeah, I'm a teacher and a parent. The school district is the best in the school, best in Virginia. I want my child to have the best. They have the best teachers, they have the best devices. But I will say that I can say with certainty that I can do another software showdown with Mac versus PC, and we're still going to have to reinvest in our Windows software to compete with what Mac gives us native. So, for those of you who are Windows users, Movie Maker is not a great program, and actually, Movie Maker doesn't even run on Windows 10. So, when we start looking at, and I can do that very easily, but I think it would look, especially in the software sense, it would look very similar to the comparison, because we would have to go, even though we have a PC Windows machine, we'd still have to pay for the cloud resources that we don't invest, currently invest in. And I know I keep, I keep hitting that drum, but the, the software that we get makes this, it adds value to this device. So, and when I use the word Ultra, I don't mean like tear off, you know, Superman underneath. Ultra means the, the, the weight and the thin, solid-state versus spinny, spin hard drives. So, when we talked about it, we really were conscious about the weight of the device, what we were, what we'd want our middle schoolers to walk around and up the stairs and down the stairs with. And at the time, four years ago, the PCs that would be much cheaper were much heavier and thicker. Yeah. And, and then just as a follow-up, I think another key question would be what the lifecycle, what the lifespan predictions are for an UltraBook? My sense is they're not as long, or they may not be, may not want to assume that they're the same. Well, one of the things I think about too, before we went MacBook, we were a, we were a Windows laptop district. And I remember, you know, six years ago, pushing around my Windows card to TJ. So, we've had that experience of using Windows devices. We had, even back then, we had a three-year replacement cycle for laptops. And we were, even then, we were paying for, I guess, the Rolls-Royce of the Windows, because we were buying the Latitude model, which was the business model laptops, because we wanted sturdy, we wanted durable. And so, even back then, we were buying, you know, and those of you who don't know Dell, Latitude is their, their, their top. And so, we were, we were making that investment then, knowing from an elementary standpoint, when I moved to the high school, we only had one cart of laptops, Windows laptops, and we didn't, because we weren't wireless at the time, so they weren't very useful. But at TJ, I mean, they were, they weren't devices the kids would carry around. And they weren't, yeah. So, that's one of the, one of the reasons we, when we talked about moving towards more of a smaller device, more of a compact device, there was a lot of conversations about the waith and weight and the, all of that information. And then just as a follow-up, when, when we get into our analogy of Rolls-Royces and Cadillacs and Fords, my understanding is now that Mac, that Apple produces an educational line of MacBook Airs that's not available in stores.
Correct.
Primarily for the educational market. So, you're not buying the latest and greatest, you're basically buying a school bus kind of thing. That's a great point. I mean, Mac has, Mac has traditionally, if you, if you look at their devices, I mean, they've always had, we, we, when I moved into TJ 12 years ago, we had IMAX, and those were created for the edu, you know, education, the consumer. Now, this is not, this is not the top of Apple's line. There's the MacBook, which is much more expensive, and as the MacBook Pro, which some of our power users would beg to have. So, this, this is, you know, this is the base model of a laptop that Apple offers. And now, the 2000, the 11-inch is being offered just for school, and that's, I think, why we're getting such a great price in the quotes.
And I remember back then, when we have Windows laptop, that we have to buy Microsoft license for upgraded Windows, because we used to have, you know, XP, Windows 7, and then the next year, you know, Windows 8. And right now, Windows 10 should offer free, but after a certain days, they're going to ask for the code and stuff. But so far, I mean, Apple laptop, we have free upgrade for the operating system, that's what I see. That's a big benefit right there, but back then, we had to buy every single device for upgrade license of Microsoft, that's for the operating system, that's costs a lot.
I do.
Yeah, we pay, yeah.
Mr. Renger.
So, I've keyed up a few things. Mr. Knight, I, I would by all means not do another software showdown. I don't, and things, parts, I, I've had the impression before when I've seen technology material coming, that I was not getting an analysis of what's good and what's bad, but a presentation of why we need to have MacBooks, right? So, I think a much more neutral, you know, here are the different columns, here are what we get, here are the year-over-year costs for each option, and here are the advantages. So, take the information that's in there, but just sort of like, you know, if we replicate what the Macs give us, here's where we'd fall short, and here's what the year-over-year cost would be, so that we can make a sort of a, a weighing, if you will. I, I also think it's really important, I don't think that the MacBook Airs are Cadillac. And I, I wouldn't say that we ought to, because we have the best school system, we ought to have the best laptops. You know, if you did that, as you said, as Mr. Castillo pointed out, we'd be giving everybody MacBook Pros. We're trying to find the best fit for our kids, given the financial constraints that we've got. And that's not to say, you know, I think it's very important that we continue to have the discussion that you've been leading to say, how should these things be used? Are we using them the right way? How do we align the teaching with the use of technology? Because I still think there's a lot of concern about that. And, you know, even if we go, you know, a full MacBook Air solution and iPads, that conversation's going to need to continue, because parents are going to need to stay informed to be comfortable with how we're using technology. But I, I also agree with Mr. Castillo, that the more we can do to sort of map out the 10-year plan for equipment in line with the technology plan, it's helpful. And the last thing, I wanted to talk a little bit about Mr. Ankuma said. I want to make sure, you know, and I'm not trying to presage what we're going to do as a board, one way or the other, but we, we have to recognize that, you know, the transition was made to a one-to-one personalized learning initiative three years ago, and there were a lot of soft costs associated with that, that our teachers and our students experienced. And if we backed off of that, we'd pay those soft costs again, but going the other way. So, we'd have to have an entirely different program, and maybe we want to do that. But it shouldn't be a pure, you know, we don't have the money, you know. If we, if we, if we don't spend money on laptops, then we're going to force lots of other costs, like there's going to be extra paper costs in both the high school and below. Teachers are going to have to, you know, I know, my kids have had several assignments that I've personally seen, you know, this fall, I think maybe at least one in Mr. Kelly's class, who's back there, that they could not have done without a computer. And I think of a civics assignment that was going through and lining up what, you know, different politicians said and, you know, mapping it all out, that wouldn't, you really couldn't do on a, on a, without a set of computers. So, I just think, let's not treat, and I'm not saying Michael said this, but let's not treat computers as something. treat computers as something like, you know, a nice-to-have. If we're gonna cut 'em, then let's cut 'em and say, we're not gonna do this anymore. And now, we've got to buy more paper, we've got to use, buy more textbooks, and we've got to make sure that we're going back and our teachers are applying, they know the ways to work with the older technology. And we live with the collateral consequences of the loss of the capability, some of which are good, but many of which are bad.
Mr. Lawrence.
Sorry, I'll keep this short, since we've already gone on way too long. Especially, you want to back up what Phil said about looking at costs, not just, you know, a dollar figure, because you can't get rid of one thing without replacing it with something else. And if you replace it with something else that's different enough, that's hard on the teachers, it's hard on the students, and you're, you're gonna have a lag time. And also, I mean, looking at costs, remember, this is at $342,000 a year, it's 0.6% of our budget. So, you know, we all went through the painful, let's cut a million dollars for fun last year, and it's, it's no fun, but still, this is 0.6% of the budget, so it's not huge. I do want to hear more about the idea of sharing, but I was also late, I apologize for being late, because I was at a lacrosse parents' meeting, and, you know, the coaches had to explain, you know, your kids are on the field at 6:15 in the morning, because if we practice after school, we have to share with three other teams. And you can't have a real productive practice for JV or varsity teams on a quarter of a field. So, and, and we don't have the option of telling third grade, guess what, your computer 40 minutes is from 6:30 till, you know, 7:20 in the morning, because somebody else has to use it at different times. So, sharing is great, but it's, it's gotta work out in practical terms, not just in theory, because, you know, 6:15 is great if you're on the JV lacrosse team, and, you know, you're told that you have to suck it up. But that doesn't work if you're in third grade, or second grade, or something else, and you're a teacher who, you know, has a five-hour instructional day. So, I look forward to what we're getting. I think it's gonna help us make a very good, informed decision.
And with that, are, does the staff have any questions about takeaways, and what additional information that the board has, has requested, or any need for clarification?
Yeah, I, I think that, that would probably be helpful. What I heard is, first and foremost, to look at a, a, a real dollars and cents, you know, as, as well as intangible comparison of a cost-benefit analysis. For example, if we were to change device to whatever, what device that was, what would we, what would, what would be lost by changing that device? And versus how much, how much money could be saved, assuming that, that the replacement device was cheaper? I think the question about old, the older Mac Airs that MEH, Mr. Knight was able to explain why that, why that, that really is, is not a very workable solution. Another question that, that's out there right now is, is the, the number, I believe that, you know, at elementary schools, especially TJ, in terms of, you know, is the number, you know, what, what is the right number? You know, is, is one cart per classroom the right number? Or is some fraction of that, because right now, it's 21 carts, 36 classrooms. So, you know, what is, what is the right number there? And then, in terms of just trying to get a handle on year-to-year costs and, and, and usage, looking at the current lease in terms of year one, year two, year three costs, then at, at the amount of money, we would be looking at one time for, you know, for trade-ins, and then holding that up against the future lease, about, about year one, two, three, four, projected trade-ins there. And, you know, and this question about what, 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 what we might lose, you know, as a result of either changing platforms or, or switching devices.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think that's right, Hunter. I'd say just something relatively simple that lays it out, you know, here's what the dollar figure is for year one, year two, year three, and year four, here's what it is under these different options, here's a, you know, a bullet format, and it really ought to be like, one page, I think.
Okay.
On advantages and disadvantages. I think you've described it pretty well. But I did want to say one thing, I want to thank all of you for this. This is, you know, I know, as Don said, this went on for a long time, that the material that you presented was by far the best technology presentation I've seen in the time I've been on the board. And this one chart showing all the different pieces and where they're going is worth the price of admission, because it explained to me lots of things that I didn't know before. And I, I know a lot of work went into that, so. And in reading all of the notes from the technical advisory committee, really appreciate it.
Thank, thank you all. Thank you very much. Just real quick to the board, we still have a fairly lengthy agenda.
We do.
And we're gonna hopefully, as we definitely have questions, but if we can try and limit a little bit of that, but we're gonna move on to 3.02, which is the review of server versus cloud.
Yes.
Schiller.
What we've done is an analysis of what programs, what applications we have migrated to the cloud, and which ones are still hosted in-house, and the reasons why they are hosted in-house. I would tell you that, according to our staff analysis this afternoon, that close to 90% of all of our applications and software matters have migrated to the cloud. Those that have remained are proprietary information, where no third-party access to sensitive teachers or student personal data can be protected elsewhere, or FERPA implications, or that the vendors have as a requirement that we maintain them and not be part of the cloud. More specifically, we can get into some of these matters, if you would like to get at the more granular level, due to the nature of some of the sensitive matters of personal data that we have to maintain close hold, we would not make that, I think, part of a conversation that's appropriate at this time. Dang, what would you like to add, and Hunter, based on what we discussed this afternoon?
Anything, Dang, or? No.
Yeah, and, and again, Dang and his team, you know, be happy, as Dr. Schiller said, you know, to have conversations, you know, with individual board members. Again, it's, it's sort of like talking about our building security systems, it's, it's something that we really, can only get down so far that we need to hold close to the vest. I know that, I understand now that when, when the question, you know, came up, the, the idea really had to do, once again, getting back to hardware, and in this particular case, servers, because obviously, servers require, you know, maintenance and work, and, and, you know, tending by, by our technology staff. And I, I believe the intent was, was to, was to look to see, you know, could we reduce, reduce that number? And, and basically, even if there were no, say, like, you know, cost savings per, per se, that, you know, because it cost us maybe a little more to, to host something, that it would actually provide relief to our tech team, which is very, which is, you know, very, very busy all, all the time.
Mr. Ankuma.
So, while I'm not a techie, has there been an actual review of this? As in, a document that says, here's the pros and cons, as Mr. writing likes to see things, pros and cons of the server versus the cloud, that we could review, even if we do it one-on-one with?
Dang has that.
Yes.
We can give that with you.
But you understand the confidentiality of the issue of why we would like to do it
on that kind of a basis?
That I get, but as long as we could see it, either we go see Dang, or whether it can be given to us, you know, one-on-one.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
Other questions? Mr. Castillo?
So, so I guess, one of my questions is, are we as far into the cloud as we can possibly hope to be? Is that the takeaway from this?
So far, it's like, I would say 90% of our application already into the cloud, and, and the, the servers that require to work internally with our device and stuff, we host in-house. Actually, we are a private cloud, that we use the virtualized software to host our own servers internal, I mean, at the data center. But we try to save money to, to host into the cloud as much as we can already in the past.
I, I will say this, to having worked closely, you know, with, with Dang in, in recent weeks, and then with his predecessor, you know, Rick Jowers, that I had, had a front-row seat to the migration from our own hosted servers into the cloud over a period of time, to the point now, that, that really, looking at applications and the appropriate place where they're hosted, whether in-house, or in the cloud, or by some other, you know, third party. I mean, this is an ongoing iterative, reiterative process that is constantly being reviewed. And to be perfectly honest, three months from now, there may be some options available to us that are not, that are not viable right now. But again, Dang, his predecessor, Rick, and I know the team are, are, you know, staying on top of this thing. And so, it's, it's very dynamic. And from talking with Dang, and again, I'm not a techie either. So, but I came away feeling confident that, you know, over the years, we have migrated those things that are appropriate out to be hosted and cared for, and updated, and upgraded, and everything else that we can. What we have right now, there are, there are really good reasons why we are still keeping that in-house, and that, that, that a review of appropriateness and, and new solutions, things like that is, is ongoing.
So...
Mr. Ankuma.
I heard, thank you.
He just was trained today on being a chair.
So, I had Dang say something about, what did you call it, our personal cloud, or whatever it, what did you call it?
Our own cloud?
Our own cloud, like, private cloud.
It's a private cloud.
Cloud, yes.
Well, if it's a private cloud, why can't we keep our private information in it? For those who understand this stuff, you see what I mean? I'm hearing you say, we've got a cloud, we've got some information we don't want to share, but it's a private cloud. Well, it's a private cloud, we keep our stuff in it?
It's our own house. We host it.
Well, right, so how secure is it?
We got same device of security amount that's, that compared to all the cloud. But when you put it on the cloud, there are disadvantage and advantage of.
So, is the, is the pri, is the private cloud, because I don't, I mean, is that like, one of our own servers?
Yes.
Okay, so it is an in-house device?
It's in-house device. Without in...
Right, so you're saying, most of it is, so where's the, 90% of it is where? In the private cloud, or in the cloud-cloud?
It's hard to, it's hard to get it. It's kind of...
Let me, let me put it in, in sort of diagram. You're saying, you're saying 90% of this stuff has gone into the cloud. Is this the cloud that I can associate with Amazon, that sort of cloud?
So, yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
So, let's, let's hold that, let's parking lot that.
Yes.
And then, where is this private cloud of ours? What's in there?
So, if I understood correctly, it depends on whether you're talking about platform as a service, infrastructure as a service, or software as a service. But, the, so, I, I learned a lot more just talking this afternoon to Dr. Schiller and Dang about what we've done. I, I would say, you know, in the interest of keeping it short tonight, that a lot of progress has been made to move things to the cloud. I think there's probably more progress to be made, but it's not a, if we do this now, it's gonna affect our current budget season. I think it's more a sort of a, a long-term effort, and there are things that you can do to protect your data in the cloud, so we might be able to move more data there. I suspect that when Dang talks about our private cloud, that he's talking about servers that we own and manage, but ones that are sitting in the Amazon cloud. So, they're not on our device and premises, and physical servers, but we own them, and they're virtual machines operated in the distant cloud.
And there's certain, there's certain servers, like, on, we have server that hosts by, by GoDaddy, that we manage it, but we still manage it.
Which means potentially, they could have access to it.
Yes.
Other parties could have access to that information.
Yeah, when you outsource your own server, yes, the top part.
Okay, so that explains it then, because I was trying to understand why, if we're trying to keep something, and we've got our own private cloud, why can't we? All right, that makes sense. Okay, Ms. Vincent, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do, are there any legal limits to what they can push into the cloud, that sort of thing, or, you know? I don't know if it makes sense. I'm asking the right question, but...
That's a good question there, absolutely, I'm sure there are. The specifics of that, it, it really depends on what you're talking about, whether it's student-specific files and information that needs to be maintained at the school level or at the central office level. I don't think that the law, as I know it, would allow us to be completely paperless. I think there are certain things that you need to have in student files that are printed, as, as far as what's in the cloud and what the concern is legally there, that I'm sure is other questions, too. But there are implications to, to being on the cloud, as there are to almost everything that we do in schools.
And I, and I can address that, too. We've been working instructionally, any, any, as certs, we have conversations about instructional software, and we try to make, make most of our decisions based on cloud or equitable access. We are following COPA, so we're making sure that when we look at software, if it is software that kids have to sign in, then we have to make sure that the company's playing nice with COPA. They have open privacy, so we can share that. And we actually have a list that all the ed techs in all the buildings have created of all the software in the, instructional software using in the cloud, and the privacy, the privacy mumbo jumbo, and all that stuff there. So, we're, we're definitely looking to, and this is a big deal, because if we think about three or four years ago, a lot of the software was server-based. So, even though kids would run a math little program to practice their math, it was running off a server that Dang and his team had to maintain. Now, that is in the cloud. And so, when we pay for it from a district level, we're making sure it fills, meets all those requirements.
And one of the requirements that's gonna be coming to our division and to hundreds across the nation is to ensure that all software that we use, that we pay for, or that we get for free, is web-accessible for individuals with disabilities. If you don't have the visual ability to use a computer, but have screen reader software, they could read it to them, and that includes all video embedded that has closed captioning, including our school board meetings, so that someone can, in real time, be part of the conversation, even though they can't auditorily understand what's going on, because they have limited ability in that regard. So, there are a lot of, of legal implications that come into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, another follow-up question for you to, I won't tell you what to research, but there, there's been a bit of a brouhaha about, you know, the Google education app suite, under their Terms of Services, Terms of Service, they are a school official for the purpose of FERPA. Some people have said, is that really how it should be? And so, one of my questions to you is, should we be worried about that? And should we, in fact, have discussions with staff about what should or shouldn't go on to various email apps as a result?
We are constantly having discussion with staff about their obligations under FOIA and FERPA, but that is not a bad reminder to bring up likely every month at staff meetings and with leadership. So, every reminder, I'm not familiar with the Google School Apps and their FERPA concerns, but I'll look into that, too.
So, one thing, Lawrence had to step out, so I might suggest, this, this feels at least like a somewhat technical subject matter that needs some additional work, including some legal analysis, and probably development of a longer-term plan, or a description of when things will be migrated to the cloud. Nothing too detailed, but can sort of explain where we're going, so I wonder if we might sort of move on from this issue. I don't know if the, if the board would be interested in establishing or setting a particular time to come back to it after some additional work had been done, but I thought I would ask the board about that.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I think it would be good to fold in with a periodic security review as well, just kind of a general infrastructure, how's it going, sort of review, so.
Yeah, which, which leads me to, if we're keeping some stuff in-house, we, at our last, we talked about the security, and the, sort of the backup systems, last time we...
Disaster recovery.
Well, yeah, that, and, and the last sort of audit that we did.
Yes.
You know, we, I don't know that we got a copy of, did that company come back and do what they had to do?
That's right.
And then, there was talk of having, everything was maintained on this campus, or in the city, was it possible to have some sort of redundancy or backup outside?
There was, I recall there was a request for the final copy of the report. And I haven't seen that yet, so if you can ask about that.
We'll look for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, Dr. Schiller, why don't we put on the agenda to come back to this in three or six months?
Yes, that is the point that we've made here, is that after we get through the crush of the budget, and get through the crush of your search for a permanent superintendent, it'd be a good time to revisit, and give us a time to do some research.
Okay, well, that answers my question, then, because I couldn't figure out why this was under the budget work session. I mean, it seemed like it was technology, so it followed on to other things, but it didn't seem like it was part of the budget.
Well, there was also a question of, were there budget implications?
Well, and I guess that I still haven't heard, so. I mean, it seems like we've, we've transferred 90%. So, I mean, it seems like we've transferred 90%. The other 10% is either close to or almost all required to be not part of that 90%. So, it just seems like this is.
So, if I, I think, John, I tried to answer that before. I don't think until we heard this report that we knew whether there were budget implications or not. I think now we know that there's no immediate budget implications to move to the cloud. And so, I think we, I think that question has now been answered. In my experience, based on the data and what we've been told today, there are things that can be done, but nothing that will result in an immediate savings. Yeah, okay.
Well, except to the extent that if server purchases next year could be avoided, because I heard there was talk about buying some additional server hardware next year. So, that's the only thing.
Yeah, well, we would need a new firewall, right?
Yeah, we need some infrastructure device that need to be replaced at end of life. And then we, we need some additional hardware, yeah. The desktop that we're going to buy for the teachers, that's the most for next year, because is, teacher is having desktop like for eight years, nine years now that owned there, that falling apart, so.
Yes, right.
We can use state funding.
We use state funding money.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I?
Yes, sir.
Just ask your indulgence, probably, we should talk about the question that's been in this room all night, and that's, when is Justin going to go home and go back to bed? And I think I'm going to do that now, because I don't want to infect you more than I already have.
Hope you feel better.
So, I will, I will keep things posted. I would point out with respect to the, to the resolution that's on the calendar, the vote for the nominee is a week from today, so we may have to act with some haste. And with that, I will tell you, wash your hands off again, and I will see you anon.
You get well.
Ready to transition?
We will move on to 3.03, the FY '18 budget discussion, and I'll start it with that.
Basically, what, we wanted to make sure that since we're not meeting again about the budget for a couple of weeks, that if you do have additional information or questions, please contact me so that we can try to answer everything that you have before you. Want to remind you that we need to look toward completing everyone's sign-up for visiting with the schools.
Which that list is, is moving around. I know a couple of folks have signed up, and hopefully others have as well.
Yeah, so we could, because we do have the school principals who are waiting for confirmation. And I guess what.
Vice Chair, the Vice Chair wants to miss it.
He's done one, I need to.
Right, great. And I guess the biggest issue is on the highest level, looking for direction as to now how to frame the upcoming three meetings for where the board will need to make decisions on the budget that have policy implications so that we can then best prepare you. Hunter has begun on our urging to put together a tool that might help facilitate this. And Hunter, would you speak to what it is that we're trying to put together so that the board? Now, you have all the information, all the issues of the needs that we have, teachers, fixed costs, mandated costs, discretionary costs, materials and so forth. So, now, how does the board fit all this in? Clearly, for the record, we can't meet all of our needs under the city guidance of budget, nor can we meet all of our needs if you factor in a little bit of state money and federal money. So, I guess what the board's going to have to look at on the bigger picture is how it wishes to position itself for its final adopted budget to send to the city. And that's what we would need for the board to give us guidance over. Hunter, explain what we're trying to put together for the board to use.
You know, essentially, as Dr. Schiller said, you know, to look at, okay, as of, you know, late January 2017, you know, what do we know in terms of revenue, guidance, state and federal? To know that out of those available funds, that they're committed already for mandates and fixed costs, certain amounts of money, which would leave, you know, approximately $600,000 of discretionary money, assuming that the board feels that it would like to stay within the initial guidance provided by city staff and the city council. The tool I'm putting together is very similar to the, the one I provided the board last spring, when we had to go in and start reducing the budget request, only it's sort of different where it's, instead of taking things out, it's what sort of items do you want to put in? And we'll be able to model various scenarios. For example, you know, under, we'll break it into categories. For example, staff compensation, so there'll be, you know, for each of the employee groups, you know, a step that we will have the ability, if there was any kind of a cowork or adjustment, that you can individually put in, you know, 3% for this group, 1% for this group, 2%, and it'll calculate, you know, those things. Basically, just a, you know, a menu to select, to see. We, just yesterday, we're sort of playing with the concept of, you imagine that you have $600,000 left to play with and you can't, you know, and that's sort of your limit. What kind of baskets of goods could, you know, you get with that? Some staff compensation, hiring some new staff, maybe like a 1% cola for everybody. It's, you know, again, there's a myriad of different ways of doing it, but the upshot is that $600,000 doesn't get you very far, but should have that later this week.
Yep. This afternoon, Hunter and I met with some city officials to talk precisely about the budget. Nothing in specifics, but I wanted to get a picture of how the city is looking at its departments and with the budget needs that they have, of what's been met, what can't be met, and how to go forward. And I understand, and correct me here, please, that historically, this board has submitted a budget with a request of what it needs, which was not within the stated revenue source, the fixed revenue source. But it was because each item in the budget the board felt strongly about could justify these are the needs, which is, I think, your obligation on behalf of leading this district. And I guess these are the bigger kinds of questions and issues that the board, I hope, will give strong thought to. You know, and we're also faced with, and you're going to be saddled with, policy decisions and its implications. Just give you an example. If the board maintains its very firm, strong policy of the 22 to 1 at the elementary grades, well, to get there, there's going to be some facility restrictions that we're facing or some adjustments. For example, if you want to do that at Daniel and at TJ without being able to add relocatable classrooms, then it could be the hard decision of having to see certain classes be put on carts. Itinerant teacher, if you want to add a teacher to maintain the 22 to 1, you may then have to put the Spanish teacher who currently has a classroom to be itinerant. This is your kind of a policy decision. And I'm not going to inflict on you my values of these matters unless you want my professional advice of ways to go here. But I do think, I ask that you individually and collectively provide us with the kind of questions that we need to research further for you, as well as how we can make this very difficult decision-making process over the next three weeks smoother to work with you. I think we have a tool for you to work with. You know it as well as we do in terms of what our counter pressures we're facing. You know, our staff has received and our community is making access every bit of information that we have and that you have. So, our hope is that together, we can reason over the next three weeks of the first, I'm sorry, from two weeks starting tonight, from tonight, right, on the 7th?
Yes.
Right, and the 14th, and then after that, to set the budget. So, that's all I wanted to bring to you, and hopefully you can go forward with giving us further direction.
Out of curiosity, what are we using now as the target revenue increase from organic growth from the city?
2.3%.
Which is dollar figure?
It's about $900,000.
So, we don't even get to make up what we lost last year.
Not unless you request specifically, as you pointed out last night, and also speak to the 90-plus student anticipated enrollment factor.
Yeah, because we, you know, honestly, that we as staff need to get a feeling for the will of the board. You know, as Dr. Schiller was laying out some very, very basic key decision points, okay, there's city, you know, there was city guidance given within 2.3%, which we know is organic growth. You know, does the board stick with that? Do they not stick with that? It's kind of like a decision tree. And if not, then, you know, what do we decide? If so, you know, what do you use those funding, funds for? Where, I must say that Dr. Schiller is, in working with him, is very, very respectful of the board, of, you know, not trying to force decisions on the board or push anything through the board. But the way that this process is going to work is, we are going to need, you know, guidance from you as a body to, you know, to move forward in making some of these hard decisions.
Mr. Ankuma?
This is Chair and Vice Chair. Any, you could share with us on your conversations with the friends across the city?
We.
I don't see how this goes any far, any further, unless we hear from them in a very definitive way.
I think Friday, Mr. Riedinger and I will be meeting with the Budget Committee of the Council, and I think at that point, expressing some of our concerns will be top of the, top of the agenda for us. And hopefully, we can walk away from that meeting, have a little bit better, including them in what we, where we are with growth and other concerns that we have, materials and those type of things, and including them in about those things, and, yeah, having a better sense of their willingness of potentially working with us on those and moving beyond the current 2.3% that we currently have as guidance from them. I think also it's going to be very important for us, and I was just sitting here trying to map out, I think our individual conversations with our buddies as we're going to try to sign that, to start those conversations as quickly as possible about some of the budget concerns and things that we have going on right now, and how constrained we are that we are still feeling the effects from the, from the cuts from last year. And this 2.3% is, you know, we can work with it, but here are the gamut of other things that are out there of enrollment growth, needing the staff, making sure that we still are able to compensate our staff accordingly, are just some of the things that we have to still be able to do. And 2.3% just is, in a day, is just covering what we have to do. It does not do anything for helping us do some of the additional things that I think to, to make our system continue to be what it is right now. And I think we need to, Friday with Mr. Riedinger, I'll start that conversation. But I think as we get our buddies, I think, pick up the phone, grab a coffee with them as soon as possible. As we move towards putting our requests together to, to send to them, I think is going to be critical at this point. Yeah, and, you know, and Thursday, you know, we'll start with the form that's on Thursday, start putting out and letting folks know where we are of the, of the current budget and some of the challenges that we have.
Form on Thursday?
The form on Thursday evening. This Thursday evening, yeah.
Where's that?
It's at the American Legion Hall, right up the street here.
Okay.
I mean, Michael, what did you expect to get definitively?
In the past, you had public hearings.
No, when I say definitively, is it a 2.3% definitive or is there room for, for, well, I don't want to call it wiggle room, but are they open to a little bit more? That's all I want. I mean, look, all I'm asking is, let's not beat around the bush. If it's going to be 2.3%, draw the line in the sand and let's see what we have, we can do with it. But, you know, it's, do we go with 2.3% and find out that we haven't even covered the losses from last season? Because that's how I look at it. Like, if you give me 2.3%, we haven't even made up what we lost last year. So, it's a, I don't want to call it a non-starter, but it's a very difficult position to be in. If it's, if there's room for more than that, let us know, so we don't spin our wheels doing that. You know what I mean? But that, I'm asking for something a little bit more concrete than, yeah, 2.3% guidance, run with it, and let's see what you can do with it. You know what I mean? I think, I don't want to be hearing May cutting chalk from classrooms. I'm not doing it this year.
That, City Council is well aware of our potential growth for next year of students?
Yeah, I mean.
They are, they are aware.
Yeah. I mean, that information has been.
In December, we met with them, yeah.
But we're still going to have only $600,000 to accommodate the students as well as other.
At this point, we, you know, we just have.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, because I'm just a little, just pulled over at this moment, so I just, please just.
You're at a deficit of your cutback from last year that's not been recovered.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Plus the addition of 90-plus students.
Okay.
Okay. And after fixed costs and the mandated personnel that we have to hire under special ed, you've got $600,000.
Okay.
So, you're really at a, starting minus 1.6 to start with.
Wait, wait, can I just back up? We, that, the $600,000, does that include the costs for educating the additional 90 students, or is that already taken care of? That's, so $600,000, okay, so their funding for them is included in that $600,000? Is that what you're saying?
No, not those 90, not the 90 student increase.
Not the 90 additional ones.
Not at all.
Okay, okay, so this is.
No allowance for, on a per pupil basis, if you look at it that way. If you were thinking about, if we were funded on a per pupil basis and you would grow each year per pupil.
Right, right.
Okay? We're regressing.
Yes, I see that.
As we pointed out last week, the materials have regressed to fiscal year, what, 13 levels.
Yes.
Okay? The materials have regressed, the cutbacks last year. You're not working with, say, round figure 40 million, you're working with 39, plus the students.
Plus the students on top of that. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And interestingly enough, you know, Mr. Ankuma's thought and idea, you know, that he expressed at the last meeting in terms of the $900,000 plus that was reduced from the school board's request last year, you know, have pulled those, those numbers and, you know, categorized them. The total reduction was $912,000. Interestingly enough, if you take the value of the mandates that we now face, which the VRS rates, the health insurance, the mostly benefits, things like that, I mean, well, and then add the fixed costs, you know, to those, those two items together come out to $915,000. It is, it was, they're just eerily close in terms of what, you know, the request that we didn't get, and then we're starting, starting off FY '18 with these mandates and fixed costs.
Mr. Riedinger?
So, I'd suggest a couple of different tracks. One is, as Higginson pointed out, we're going to be meeting with the Council on Friday. As Mr. Lawrence pointed out, it's awfully hard to get additional certainty, but, you know, one of the tracks is continued discussions with the City Council, making sure they're aware of our concerns, and seeing if we can get agreement or guidance on a higher amount. And that either comes with a higher amount, we decide to stick to it, or it sticks at 2.3% or somewhere in between. Depending, I think we've got to have the separate process, and we can decide, you know, what we want to do based on that. The separate process is to actually come up with what the budget is. It's my, the view I came into this, and it still sort of remains for me, is that, you know, we need to come up with two budget figures. The more we talk, the more I lean towards we ought to ask for what we think we need, not regardless, but even if that's above the guidance. But we ought to make sure it is absolutely what we need and explain why it's got to be above the guidance. And along with that, I think we ought to come up with a proposal for, and include this in the budget that we send, if we only get guidance, this is how we'll spend it.
You mean my doomsday scenario?
Yeah, your doomsday scenario. That ought to be included, because what I don't want to do is what we had to do last year, where we had to go back and spend two months figuring out where to make the cuts. I want to say, if we get guidance, here's what it is, you know, and City Council, you guys make the decision whether we get more money or not, but this is what we're going to do with it if we get it. I think. I think in terms of coming up with the, you know, the budget, even if it's above 2.3%, you know, what we need to really focus on is a sustainable school program in the political climate that we've got right now. And, you know, I'll, I'll steal something that Justin has said a number of times, but put it in a different context. You know, you get a budgeted guidance, you get competitive pay for teachers, and you get small class sizes. You could have two of those three things. You can't have all three.
At this rate, I'm not sure we can get two.
Maybe, but, you know, you, you could actually, you know, if, well, if you had class sizes of 40 or Fairfax class sizes, you could pay teachers competitively and sort of. So, um, we've got to figure out what that balance is and then put the, the situation, the proposal forward that actually lets the City Council make the political decision as informed by all of us and by the community, what they want to do. And so, you, if we have three sessions left, you know, I think, you know, just as a straw man, we might want to spend one session with the tool, going through and figuring out what the big, you know, weights are, what our priorities as a board are, what we want to try and do in either, and then maybe one coming up with what the, what we really think we need, the above, arguably above guidance proposal. And then if we, you know, the doomsday scenario. What's the doomsday scenario? And then we're hopefully done.
Mr. Enkoma.
So, at least in the past, uh, the first couple of years, we, we, the board had a session, and I, I have to give up time for this, just as everybody else, but a Saturday, where we sort of just threw stuff on the table, brainstormed, talked a little bit more, less about the numbers and more about, more strategically asked ourselves what we want to do. Seems to me we're missing that session that would allow us to determine as a system or as a program or whatever you call this FCCPS, what is important to us, what we, what we want to keep, what we can't, what we cannot keep under the circumstances, economic and political, and then make decisions based on that. I, I get the sense we're, we're, we're sort of going along for going sake. And maybe I make it too simplistic. Let me give you an example. Here's the tech budget, which has sort of created an animal on its own. It's sort of feeding off of it, so the minute you buy, then as the kids increase in number, you keep buying. Dang is looking for a techie just to do repairs. It's, it's, it's almost feeding off of itself, okay? How sustainable is that? Because for me, I'm looking at it and going, yeah, that's great. But my hesitation with buying into it is because other parts of the school system are being left high and dry. They have a voice. Those pieces are maybe qualitative, but they're just as important to the kids, you know? I was at a band boosters meeting today, and I don't know how, yesterday. I don't know how true this is or what I heard, but, you know, the acoustics and a parent spending $14,000 of their own money to fix stuff. And, you know, I've been at other meetings where teachers are taking money out of, it's like, where does it stop? You know, and it'd be, some may be here, say, I, I don't know, I haven't done any verification. All I'm saying is that when we don't stop to ask ourselves, all right, all these programs, it could be 100 programs, how many of them are sustainable? How many of them do we need? As a small school district with a small budget or with what we, what do we need? What do we want? What do we need to cut? What, what can't we afford? But we can't just try to do everything or be office orbit. And, and I think as a school board, we need some time to do it, not around this table, but under the, the, guys are a retreat. I'm not trying to take it away from the public, but it's a time when we, we put all this aside and sort of think a little bit more strategically. And I think we, we've missed that the last year or so. And I, it would be helpful. I don't know if we've got the time to do it before we approve this budget, but we just seem to be just moving along because we have to. And I, anytime I get into that situation, I feel like that's when I pull the brakes and I go, that's it, I'm not going anymore. You know what I mean? I, I, I'm just ranting, but I don't know what your thoughts are.
Any other comments before? Mr. Lawrence?
I mean, not to what Michael said, because I'm still trying to wrap my head around most of what he just said. Just the, you know, the, the City Council is, is well aware of the growth and the needs. You know, the Budget and Finance Committee, Tony and Hunter and Justin and I have met with them for, what, the last six months. They know. You know, Mary Beth and Karen are great and they're very supportive of the schools. They can't cut deals separate from the, the full council. And the bottom line is, the guidance is, the CFO tells them what the organic growth is going to be, and they cut that in half, and that's your guidance. So, you know, talk to them about, can we get higher guidance? But we're not going to. And, you know, Michael didn't want to, you know, put down a marker and say, we're not going to meet their guidance, but we're not going to meet their guidance. So, I mean, to me, you know, you, you said, Dr. Schiller, that was one thing you wanted to know. Do we meet their guidance, do we not? To me, given, even, even if it weren't for the $900,000 last year that we lost, we can't meet their guidance and do our job with a straight face and, you know, go home and sleep soundly. So for me, that's, that's an easy answer. And, and I understand it's got to be tempered with, you know, GM, they're talking about, you know, five cent tax increases just for GM. We need to temper what we ask for in light of that, because on the one hand, we've got to be able to save for high school while still operating this one. So we have to be careful about asking for too much. But the bottom line is, we've got high school that we have to deal with at some point, and we've kicked it down the road far enough.
So I, thank you. I, I, I'll, going back to what Michael said, um, I think that's a very important thing to do. When I said sort of a general session, what our principles are, you know, in terms of the three things we've got scheduled, I was thinking about that sort of discussion. I don't remember doing that as a retreat last year, did we?
I don't.
No.
No.
But I, I mean, I'd be, if, if the board is willing and folks have the time, that's a, a perfect thing to do in sort of a extended Saturday session, to just have an informal work session and spend a lot of time doing it. It's a question of, with all the meeting schedule we've got now, whether people can afford to devote that additional amount of time. Regardless, before we have that first big session, I think we need the, the tool that Hunter and Superintendent talked about. You know, we need all of the data that we can about the programmatic budget and broken down and the line item, where we are, just sort of work through things and come up with principles. But I, you know, I, I'd be certainly willing to devote the time to that if, if board members have the time to devote to that.
And to, for me touching on what Michael said too, I, and Mr. Lawrence for that, for that matter, I do think we're at a point of what we're, we are going to have to go over 2.3% because it's just not feasible with our growth that what we're having. But I think also what we need to do is have, of having those conversations and kind of-
Yep.
-preparing for, preparing them because of what's going to happen. Because we do have the growth that is, it's, it's not something that we're projecting for this year. It's, it's here. We have 90 more students, preparing them for, for that. But I do think kind of going that dual track, as Mr. Redinger said, of putting together that budget that says, here are not nice to have, what we would really, really want in the, in the perfect world, but this is really what we need to have to make our system continue to be what it is. Here's that, pass it on to them so that we're in a better position of having the 2.3 prepared. Ultimately, as Mr. Redinger said, I think that then puts it in to their, and, and us having the data to back up the need. I think that's the big thing, we have to have the data to back up our request, not only to them, but also to, to the public, to the parents of why we're asking for whatever over the 2.3 we, we need. But also have that 2.3 so that we're not doing the exercise that we did last year. That when we, when, and hopefully not getting whacked, but if ultimately they go back to what their guidance is, and that's what they approve and put into the overall budget, we already have in place the, what's going to have to happen. And it, it at least saves some of that, and they, and we're putting it out front. This is what's going to happen versus us having the conversation about having one or two copiers in a building, which was pretty painful after having that. But if we have that in place already, but I think we go in with the ask of what we need. Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I, I understand the idea of doing the doomsday budget, but frankly, I think it's, A, not doable, B, it's going to look like it's just a political tactic on our part, and C, if we do get cut, it's not going to stop us from having to go back and do it again. The reason I say it is, yeah, it took us two months to cut $900,000, two painful months. If we're really talking about doing that in the next two weeks while we're doing a real budget, what we're going to have to do is take huge things. It's going to be no teacher pay increase, it's going to be increased class sizes.
Yep.
And, and that's going to be it, and that's going to be seen as, by the City Council, to a certain extent, quite rightly, as a threat. Because that's the, the meat acts. What we did last year was we do, we did the scalpel, we went through and we cut. We saved what was important and we chopped tiny pieces to make big amounts out of everything else. We, we can't do that now. And we can't pretend that we can do in two weeks, in addition to do our, the budget that we need, a 2.3% budget like we did last year. We just can't. I mean, even if we spent the next two full weeks doing it 10 hours a day, we, we couldn't do it. So we're going to end up taking the big chunks that are going to look as scary as possible for the City Council. And I, I think that's going to be received very badly, because that would be seen as us going to the public to say, well, if you do what the City Council said, class sizes are going to explode. So I just think we need to think about that, especially while they're looking at, you know, a possible five cent tax increase for our high school. And also, even if we did say, okay, it's going to be these two big things, and then they cut us, honestly, we would have to go back and then have that discussion with the community again, and it's not going to be them rubber stamping, you know, don't pay the teachers, boom, class size. We're going to have to go through what we did last year. So I see a lot of negatives, and I understand the idea, but I just see very few positives.
Mr. Redinger.
So I respectfully but strongly disagree.
I, I expected nothing less, so.
And I hear what you're saying, John. I just think, I, I don't think we can do what we did last year. I, I think we did go through and find all the places where we could squeeze out, whether it was a sheet of paper here or a copier there. And I don't think that's there anymore. I think we are now to the point that if we have to do a guidance scenario, then we're cutting arms off. And that means that class sizes go up. And I would not present, you know, what in the federal government is called a Washington Monument scenario. I think we've just got to recognize that we, you know, competitive pay for teachers or small class sizes, if we are at guidance, one of those two things has to go. We've got to increase the class sizes, or we've got to say, well, we're going to pay our teachers what, within 3% to 5% of what they get in Arlington. And I, I don't view that as a, I mean, it's not a threat, it's a promise. Which is why I think that we, you know, we ought to, we may not be able to do it. You're, you know, I, I concede that that may be a bridge too far. But I think we're going to, I hope, we're going to have enough data that if we're left in a position of having to remove an arm, that we can make a decision before we give the budget to the City Council of whether it's our left arm or our right arm. And then they get to make the decision. In some sense, I guess it is a threat, but that's, that's, that's their job, is to say, how much money are we going to give the schools? We don't get to decide that. I don't want to say, if you do it, you know, we're, you know, we're going, we shouldn't present them with an impossible scenario. We should present them with, what are we going to do if you give us guidance? And like I said, if we can't do it, we can't do it. But I, I think the whole exercise of trying to cut little salami slices after we're given not what we think we need furthers the notion that that fat is always there, and so that we only need guidance because we'll be able to find the money somewhere.
If, if we're, if we're actually willing to say, this is what we will cut, I'm all for that. I mean, remember, I'm the torches and pitchforks guy. But the bottom line is, in, in the past, we've not been willing to do that. We've been willing to sort of whisper, class size is going to go up, this might happen. And that was perceived as a threat. If we're willing to stand up and say, listen, if you hold us to 2.3%, class sizes go from here to here in these grades, fine. I am perfectly fine with that. Or if we're willing to say, we will not do this step raise for the teachers, fine. We've not ever been willing to do that. So that's, that's my concern. I am more than happy to be very blunt, because I tend to be very blunt. You know, this is what we need. You, you say, we can only get this much? This is what we're going to do. If there's some explanation that's needed, tell us, but I, I would like to make it very simple. It's just not what we have done before, and we've been sort of pushed into not doing it by saying, wow, that's, you know, kind of a threat to the City Council.
I, I, I agree. And I know, I've heard that from several people, that we're, we're threatening, we're threatening parents. But I mean, I, I mean, it isn't a threat. I mean, it, but it was perceived as one by more than several people. And so I think by being assertive and taking that hard line, this is what we have, this is what we're going to, how we're going to spend it, here's our other option. And then if we don't do it that way, you know, then, and then here's our third, if we get more funding. And I think we have to be, we have to be hard-minded. This is it. Like this, this is like, this is, uh, you know, D-Day. We gotta just step forward and be assertive, and this is reality.
Yeah, if we're doing it as a threat, I don't like it.
It's not a threat.
If we're doing it as a reality and a promise, I am fine with it. That's, that's my only point.
I like your approach, Phil, and I think just straightforward.
I think we're all in violent agreement, really. It's just a question of how do we, how we do it. And, and I don't think there's a shortage of, of will to state the facts and let it speak for itself with the numbers that we have. So I, I think we're, I think we'll be fine. Trust me, we'll be fine. I have no objection going to any citizen, school board member, City Council member saying, if you do this, we have to cut off the left arm, or if we do this, the right arm goes. Pick an arm.
Actually, may I? One, just, let me just, if I might. We tried to build a budget this year for you to show you how every dollar is spent.
Yes.
I could tell you, unless you take away something, and something would have to be very big.
Right.
There's nothing else that can be nickel and dimed or cut.
Oh, no.
The reality is that you have before you everything that we need to operate. And acknowledging the fact that there are fixed costs that we can't get around, nor can we cut those, unless you're willing to cut benefits. It does come down to, how do we compensate our wonderful staff? How do we maintain your priority of the class sizes? That's where all the dollars are. Unless you're willing to now say, all right, we are going to jettison something. And what is that something that's going to be equate to $960,000 for a step, step increase? It's going to be people. Or what is it that you're going to do to bring up your materials level to fiscal year 15? And you need $122,000 for? What are you going to take away? One more staff. Meanwhile, you have to add something. You want to keep your programs going? You want to be able to sustain your next level of languages, sciences, maths? There's nothing you can say, go back and find the money, unless you're willing to make the policy decisions. So I, I frankly do not see it as a threat. I can stand before this- I can stand before this community. I don't live in this community, I won't be here very long, to tell them, there's everything there. If you want to dismantle the school system, you're going to dismantle where it hurts the most, the teacher contact time with the student, your class size. Or you're going to dismantle the student, the district, by not being competitive in the marketplace, and will not be able to recruit, nor replace those who will have to move on to another place to work. It's come to that point. Plus, there are more kids walking in the door. There's a need for teachers to accommodate those kids. Something big would have to go, it's not, and it's not a threat. It comes down to the fact, this is the reality. As we said, all right, if we only have $600,000 left to spend discretionary out of the guidance, and you choose not to jettison anything, you pick where you're going to spend $600,000. I could tell you, $600,000 and go real quick, cola, materials, that we talked about last week, you're at the max. Therefore, you've got class sizes and classes that will not be able to be sustained, and you will not have any, one more dollar left for a raise. It is that dire, I will tell you that, and you know it. And so the big decisions are going to be is how to come to closure on this, and how to spell out the scenario of what this costs, and why we must have it, and what's the downside if we don't. You can't fund it, but you can make the case for what is necessary. I'm sorry, soapbox, but that's the reality.
There's some key principles, you're like, you know, Mike, we have to talk to all of our stakeholders, not all of our stakeholders, both of our public stakeholders, and we've got the meetings with the teachers coming up. My, my going in view, this is subject to discussion among all of us, but my going in view to the discussion is that a step has to be included, because we didn't give the teachers a step last year, and I think if we continue to fail to give teachers steps, we're asking them to leave and to go to Arlington or Fairfax, where they will get an immediate raise. So my going in position is for the, the budget we present, you know, I don't want to sacrifice class size, we've got to figure out what we can do, but I, I think we absolutely have to give teachers and staff and administrators a step. Because if we're not, we're killing, it's important to us to have small class sizes, but why our school system is great is because of our teachers, and we have to keep them. That's kind of what I think. I said, I'm happy to have that discussion, but I think the discussion around the, the not guidance budget is, what do we think we absolutely have to have? Given that we want to build a new high school, what do we have to have? And, you know, then it is what it is, and then if we have to cut back and say, as John said, you know, not a threat, but if we don't get that, what does this mean? What's the doomsday scenario? Not as a threat, but what's the realistic outcome of that? And I think we ought to put the work in advance and let the city council make a decision, not as a threat, but because it's their job to make that decision. They've got the taxing authority. We will do our best to give them their options, but then they make the decision.
And I am not afraid to tell any city council member of the community that it's not a threat. If you see it as one, that's your problem, because these are the facts. That's my position.
Mr. Reiner, to your point and to what Dr. Schiller pointed out, what I was going to say is, last spring, the board found itself in a position where it was doing that salami slicing and taking a bit here and having to cut things out. I would say there is a, what I think, a significant difference now where the board finds themselves. Because you're at the point of building a budget, it's, the question is, what are, the question is not, what are you going to take out? The question is, what aren't you going to put in? By, by and large, if that makes, if that makes any sense.
A difference?
It's, it's, it's a different approach to say, if, 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 if we only have $600,000, these are the things that we will not be able to put into the budget, as opposed to, we are going to take these things out of the budget.
Hunter.
Yeah.
How much of the budget is new? I guess I'm trying to answer your question by, by thinking, asking myself, are we even trying to put anything new into the budget?
The.
That would, that would, that would, it, that would sort of make, that would seem like we're putting something in. We're just trying to maintain what we have. You know, so it, for me, it's more of.
A maintenance.
What are we cutting?
I see what you're saying.
The budget is more about, what are we cutting?
Right.
You know, rather than, we wanted to put some things in that we can no longer put in.
The only thing you're putting into this budget is $225,000 worth of mandated special ed teachers.
That's.
That's all that right now.
That's a mandate.
And to maintain, and keeping the heat on, and keeping everything going on just as it is now, and that's why you have $600,000 left. You're adding nothing else, not a dollar for raises for anyone, not for necessary teachers to absorb the 90-plus kids or to sustain the educational program. You're going, you're taking away from the educational program.
I guess that answers Hunter's question.
Yeah. You don't have.
To what Mr. Enkuma said of the potential of a Saturday session, just kind of hash out those things. I am looking at my calendar, I believe February 4th is the, the town hall meeting, which then leaves, I would think, if we're going to do that, it needs to be February 11th or, probably February 11th works best, I think, of moving up, or the 18th, I would think would be the two Saturdays to potentially add an additional meeting to that week.
I'm not trying to create any more work, I'm just.
Michael loves meetings.
What I've done, what I've done with other boards is to set aside an earlier start time, like, say, from 4:00 to 7:00, I'll provide the food, to where you have your strategic planning retreat session before you go into your budget discussion.
That's a good idea.
So that it's not another day out for somebody, but rather, you know, if you can arrange, and we'll supply dinner, but not from the current budget. Okay. That, that if you wanted to, I mean, after three hours.
Pete the place.
Then roll into your budget discussion, you have then defined some, some framework. There's, that's another way of doing it, rather than trying to rob you of a, of a Saturday.
That could be an option as well.
I guess we can throw a couple, some dates out. It was, it was an idea, I mean, I'm just thinking it's something that we should do as a board, preferably annually.
Potentially this, the 7th, when we come back, could be an option of.
Yes.
Folks, look at your schedules and see if that possibly works.
7th of?
The 7th of February.
That's a holiday, school holiday, it's a school holiday.
What is?
Yeah, it's a, the first two, the two days after the beginning, after the end of the quarter, I think.
February 6th and 7th.
She's just saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not here, I'm out of town, but.
Oh, okay.
But it's a, it is a FCCPS, I don't know if staff and central office is off, but.
Oh, no. Neither are teachers.
Oh, no, oh, right, because they're doing work.
Special day.
Yeah, yeah.
We do this on a Saturday.
Well, the Saturday is when we've had it, because then.
That was just general work sessions, I think we, we did, where we're not really.
Yeah, we normally kick off on Saturday.
Yeah, it's, it's a Saturday with just a work session, kind of like what we've been doing now, we just not.
For weeks.
But on the Saturday.
Yeah, but just look at calendars and.
Yeah, just look at calendar and just get back to me of that.
All right, so we're going to move on to the 3.04, discussion of procedures for budget public hearings, and this is in reference to the adding of the follow-up public comment, and just wanted to open up, have that discussion. I know Mr. Lawrence has, has some comments about that, and we can just have a, just a general discussion about that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my comments are fairly short. If we go down this route, we just need to have rules, not let it turn into a public forum. And we need to remember, we always have a public comment, so what we should do is tell people, you've got, you know, a lot less time, and you are asking a question, you're not making a comment. I mean, we've all been to conferences where, you know, people stand up, and they have a five-minute statement, followed by a sentence that ends with a question mark, but they didn't really have a question, they were just making a comment. So I think what we need to make clear is, you've got, A, less time than you do when you make a public comment, because you've got those three minutes. If you want to ask a question, ask a question. But other than that, I, I don't see the, the utility of this at all. I mean, people have the ability to ask questions at the beginning as part of the public comment, and then if we have answers that we can give them, we can always give them. For anybody who's interested in having shorter meetings, I mean, this is, you know, a step in the wrong direction, too. So that's my concern, is if we do it, we need rules, not just see how it goes, and people have to be told, this is not a public comment, this is not a public forum, this is questions only. But I'd prefer not to go this way.
Other comments? Mr. Reiner?
So I, I hear what Mr. Lawrence is saying, and I agree, we, we want shorter meetings. My, my concern is making sure that we have, when we have a public hearing, that it actually is a public hearing, and people have a chance to contribute as best they can. I think for things that we do as a public hearing, the easiest way to do it, and this, this is not in line with what Mr. Lawrence said, we could just, one option would be to just say, you know, you can ask questions, but I think people may also want to hear the discussion and say, well, you guys discussed this, that, or the other thing, and I think that's wrong. And I'd be perfectly happy to hear that after the board meeting, as opposed to before. The, one thing we could do is, as I said, we could just have, you know, treat it as a public comment period, but give them a minute and say, it's for questions, or you could just have a second public comment period. There is nothing in the current rules, which I read earlier today, saying that you can have only one public comment period per meeting. It would result in longer meetings, but you could say, you know, three minutes for the first time, and you can give people two minutes, or one minute, or three minutes, or whatever you want for a second period at the end of the meeting, so people could give you feedback on what was discussed, and you could take into it account when you did the next meeting. And I don't think that'd be a public forum, because it'd just be another proceeding as per the rules. And of course, we can have legal advice from our, our esteemed lawyer on whether that constitutes a, a public forum or not, but as long as we're not opening up to anything anybody wants to say, and we're not engaging in viewpoint discrimination, it feels to me like that's something we could do if the board wanted to do it. And I'm just looking for ways to get people more involved in the budget process, so they have their say and are invested in the outcome.
I, I don't get the feeling that people are finding difficult ways to get to us to be involved in the budget process. I, I really don't. And, and I guess part of my concern is, is this fair to people who don't want to stay till the end, but might have something they would want to say? I mean, part of the reason you have a public comment section at the beginning, everybody knows it's there, you can come, and then you can leave, everybody's guaranteed the same amount of time, but here it comes down to, well, you know, you get more time if you stay, which seems to make it not inequitable, just uneven. So I, I don't see the, what the benefit is. And, and people don't have any trouble, you know, sending Marty, sending all of us questions or making comments at any time. So I, and I understand if it were just limited for the budget, it would honestly be, you know, a few weeks, maybe a month. I just still don't see what it gets us. And whether there are any legal questions about, you know, fairness or process, or does this suddenly constitute a public forum, I, I, I'm not even looking at that.
I think more importantly than, than taking more questions or having a second public forum, I, I think we should respond to some of the comments that have been made already. I know we don't, we don't really do that during public forum, we just listen, but I feel by not responding either directly, or sometimes we respond indirectly by having, you know, our, our teachers speak, or we talk about technology, but I, I think it would be better to respond to those people who do come and make their public comments, and I, I don't see why they can't make them at the beginning. I mean, they could rely on the previous week's meeting, or the previous meeting, and ask questions or make comments about what we discussed then. They can refer to it on, you know, on, on the website, and, and if we take those, those questions at the beginning, I think we should be prepared the following week to respond, or respond to the comments. Do you know, I don't feel like we do enough of that. I think people say, they're, say what they're going to say, and we go, oh, that's nice, and then we just get on with our meeting. I, I, I feel like we're, we're giving those people who have the nerve to come up here and, and, and speak, we're not giving them their, their, you know, their full attention. I think we really do need to respond.
So is this a situation where we, Marty, do we take notes? I mean, do we, are the minutes, do the minutes include what the public speak?
Yes, they do.
The public comment? I don't know, is that a source, is that a source from which to respond, given that we make some mention of what they say?
I think it could, from my estimation, it's, every public comment that is made at whatever time it is, be it budget or in general, every comment is not necessarily something that's generating.
Requires.
That's generating a question and a response.
Okay, or requires a response.
I, I think there are times when there are questions asked that, yes, I think we should, as, if not as a, a board member, but, or at least instruct staff to, particularly when it's, you clearly, it's a question that some work or research needs to be done on it. I think we do need to, I don't necessarily know if the following week we do it, or in general, the person who's asked the question responding back to them with a response, just being efficient on responding back to them, I think is a big thing. I think for, for this, I think it's an opportunity, giving every ample opportunity from the start of the meeting, and potential, if a person has a question, and I think I would limit it to a question about something that was discussed at the budget that we just previously discussed, that they can ask that question, and then we would then take that down and potentially, same thing, respond to it. There are other jurisdictions that do it already, of listening today at the VSB that training, there are several jurisdictions that actually have a front end and a back end of comment, and they do it year-round. We're only talking about limiting it to a month of budget, because I would not want that to extend the overall meeting. I think budget is a special circumstance, that giving folks an ample opportunity to ask questions, or have their, particularly that back end, ask questions, and then we be prepared to answer those questions either via email or in that next week's meeting, so that we can have that ready to go and taken care of during that season. I think it's just for that particular window, giving them as many opportunities as they can to weigh in, I think would, would, I think, suit us well at this particular stage of, of the, of the process. And that's just for this particular time. I do not want to, of what other jurisdictions do, of having it year-round, of two opportunities. I think that then would create, in my opinion, a little bit more of an issue and, and extend the time of our meetings, and I don't think any of us necessarily want to do that, but with budget, it is an opportunity.
But why not just tell them to email us, then they don't have to sit around through the entire meeting, they can go watch it at home, and then just email us a question. I mean, it, it seems like it's, it's actually harder on people if we make them wait until the end before we say we're going to answer their question, where if they send us a question by email, we would.
I don't think we are making anyone stay and wait, because to do that, they still will have that same opportunity, but they have that email opportunity later from home to do, but also if they invest the time. But also, if they invest the time to stay here, which there are those who invest the time during budget to sit here, the three and a half, four hours that we're here, to give them the opportunity to go ahead and do it while they're here, too. So that's, and that's kind of where I come from it from. But, I'm not taking, it just gives them another opportunity to, to answer, to ask questions via the email route, or the other, and I agree with Margaret, we just need to be much better when it's a true question that someone's asking us to make sure it gets responded to.
I guess it seems, well, at least, I'm with Margaret about finding a way to respond to them, and I'm open to ideas. It's just a question of how we do it, and then whether it affects the process. So, yeah, if we can come up with some way to either address the issue, city council has a, what do they do? Do they have a way of allocating it to the city manager, or the city attorney, or somebody in the city, is that...
I think, and I can only speak from my time, it was, I think it was, they, during my time, I think they have the same issue, of just making sure, of getting the question, and then responding to it later. I think they sometimes are good at doing it, and then sometimes they potentially...
Bust through the cracks?
It falls through the cracks of getting a response. And it's, and that's going to happen from time to time, but I think if we make a good effort of responding...
Respond.
To a, again, and I want to stress, to an actual question, because every time someone steps over there, it is not necessarily with, can you get back to me and let me know, you know, answer. It's letting us know what they're feeling, a particular opinion about a particular topic is. But there are those who ask, you know, hey, can someone get back to me? I've looked at this, and I don't understand it, can someone please get back to me with an explanation? I think it is our responsibility to respond to that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I might offer a suggestion to the chair. Given the lateness of the hour, and then we're down to board members, and we don't have consensus on this, I think we might want to continue to discuss this, rather than trying to have a resolution this evening.
I was about to suggest that. I think it's something that we, may not actually happen this year, because we're moving towards that decision point, but I think it is a good topic for us to have a conversation and come to some type of agreement.
All right?
If I may briefly...
Yes, yes, sir.
...on the public forum issue, as long as if you were to agree when this would take place, and if it was going to be limited to a budget discussion, and limit the topic and make that clear to the public, I think that wouldn't create an unlimited public forum. It would be a public forum for purposes of the budget. You could still put the same parameters on the discussion, or whatever parameters you wanted on that. And as our policies, bylaws 2.30, provide, the chairman's still responsible for the conduct of the meeting, to make sure that the subject is appropriate, presented for the length of time agreed upon. So, in those regards, you could still have reasonable parameters on a public comment, or public discussion, or public question. It would be up to you all as a board to decide what, if any, parameters you'd want to put on that, and how you would want to label it. But I have less concerns about creating a public forum, if you're going to define the purposes of it and the duration.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are going to move on to our closed session, and if we obtain a motion...
Mr. Chair, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, legal matters under Section 2.2-3711, Section A, subsection 7, in particular, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lawrence, a second? Mr. Kemp, a second?
Yes, Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
You want us to leave?
All right. Come on. Out of close, move us out of close.
And move that we reconvene in an open session?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
If some are certified.
Certified closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed at a closed meeting, to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Mr. Ankuma? Yeah, Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
We didn't get a second.
Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry. Sorry.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Ward?
Margaret Ward. All right, okay, sorry. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, and for the move to business information, 6.01, review of policies and go-forward schedule.
Please.
Nancy.
Yes, members of the board, I've prepared a spreadsheet that's available on board docs that outlines our current sections of policy, the topic area as it's listed in our table of contents, and whether there's a corollary from the Virginia School Board Association's model policies that we subscribe to. There are a number of areas where we have either special policies, or policies that are broken out in different ways than the Virginia School Board, but it is my advice to the board at this time, or my question to the board at this time, is how you would like us to proceed on reviewing and revising policies, knowing that we subscribe to the Virginia School Board Association's Policy Service. I would recommend that, if the board were so inclined to move from our policy numbering and ordering system to the Virginia School Board, that would allow us to stay more up to date with the laws and the case law as they come down, and have a more thorough review, and more timely review of our policies. If that's the direction the board wants to go, Dr. Schuler and I would recommend taking perhaps one of the sections of policy, giving us time to go through those sections, see how that correlates with what we have, whether we would want to make changes to the VSB policies, and then adopting their, their policies section by section. And when I say adopting, that would be, I would present to the board, the board could have a discussion, we'd come back to a second review, and at the second review, you could decide if you want to go forward with those policies. They're, looking at the chart that is available, there are a number of sections where there are a lot of correlaries between what the Virginia School Board has and what we have. We would recommend, starting with personnel, which is our largest section, this binder is all of the policies excluding personnel, there's a separate binder about this large of personnel policies. I think that might take two to three months, but we could take that, and then if other issues come up that you'd like, you or members of the central office staff would like me to take out of turn, we don't have to just look at the policies, the personnel matters, but I do think that looking at the personnel matters might be a very good place to start, if the board were inclined to move towards the VSB model policies.
Questions? Mr. Lawrence?
One question. You mentioned switching to the VSB numbering?
Yes.
So, all our sections, you know, 2.1 would become something else?
Yes.
Won't that create, as you're going along, won't that create a nightmare for where one policy is referenced to another, and you change this, and now this has a different number? I mean, it seems like that's almost making it needlessly more complicated for something that's already ridiculously complicated.
It would be making it more difficult. There have been divisions in the past that have adopted all the VSB policies at once, but in doing so, there's some VSB policies where there are alternative wordings, or you have to fill in wordings, or adopt different rulings. So, I think the amount of time it would take to adopt them all in whole, and then figure out what we're missing from our policies, I don't, I don't know how we could have the time to do that. So, you're right, there would be a period where there's not very, very good overlap, or we'd have to look into whether, in reviewing, say, the personnel section, if that's what you'd like me to look at first, do we need to enter alternative references throughout it? The nice thing is, if, where we go as a board, if where you instruct us to go is to go towards all the VSB policies, and we try to do that within the year, or within a certain amount of time, the VSB structuring follows what the National School Board Association, how they structure their policies. So there's a comprehensive table of contents, and a search tool, that actually is a lot easier to use than what we have right now. But in the interim, it would be tricky, and there might be some overlap where a policy's referenced, and then we don't have that policy, or it has a different numbering system. I don't know, though I'm certainly open to suggestions, on how we could adopt the VSB policy section by section, but then still be able to reference back to the old section, and have the references within the VSB section to the new sections. But, I'm happy to work with you if you have a creative solution to that, or work with anyone on how we might do that. Otherwise, there would be some time where there's reference to sections that don't exist, or to policies that we still have not amended.
Okay, but the idea is, you get through the pain, and then going forward, it's a whole lot easier.
Yes.
Okay, that kind of pain is worth it.
That kind of pain is worth it, and what we pay for with the VSB Policy Service is for them to do lobbying enrichment for us, so that we know what the new laws are going to be. And every year, when there's new legislation, then all we have to do is tick through quite easily and say, yes, we're up to date with all the laws, and we're up to date with all of the state and federal cases that have come out. So it makes policy review going forward for the board very, very easy. And to the extent, there are certain policies that are Falls Church-specific, having two students go to Thomas Jefferson High School, for example, that we don't have to change, but we will review every five years as we're required, to see if there's anything that we need to do, or change within there. So, to the extent we have specific Falls Church policies we want to keep, that'll be part of the process, as we review the policies that I suggest the board look to keeping, but maybe changing the lettering system, so that it aligns with the VSB policies, if that's the direction the board wants to go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reitinger?
So, first of all, I agree very much with Mr. Lawrence, that I like my pain upfront, if it reduces the pain over the long term, so let's take our pain upfront. I think the idea that you've put forward makes a lot of sense. I've been, a couple of other incarnations of my life, been responsible for updating policies, and it's always better to use a form, because, you know, what's common is much greater than what's uncommon. So I think the idea of transitioning into the VSB format, so that we minimize workload for future boards, and for future superintendents and general councils, makes a lot of sense. In terms of the approach, you know, I at least think of it in terms of the policies that we can adopt wholesale with just, you know, maybe a word change or two, the ones where we want to add a little bit, and then our Falls Church unique policies. I recognize that it's easier to do that in chunks, and, you know, to be frank, I don't know what the best way to do that is. In some sense, I think that you and the superintendent probably have a better sense of that, and I'd be, you know, I'd be comfortable with giving you priorities, but having you come up with a work plan, I'd like to target trying to get the whole thing done in this calendar year, if we can. If that's not possible, then...
I appreciate your optimism. Let's see what we can put together.
I won't be here for that.
Go for it. Oh, I want to say...
Stop saying that.
I think, I think, Mr. Lawrence raised another very good point, which is, you know, doing this partially is going to result in some cross-referencing problems.
Yeah.
I'd suggest that maybe the best way to handle it is just, with our first round, we adopt a translation table, and says, you know, anytime one of these references is, it also applies to this. And so, if there isn't one of the other things, you can automatically transfer over without trying to go through, and with each update, change all of the old policies, because that strikes me as what I would call in mathematics, an n-squared problem. It's hard.
Yes, yes, it is.
See, the dual reference sounded like it made more sense, where it's, it would be this under the new one, but it's this under the old one, and then eventually, all the old ones would go away. But honestly, whatever works...
We have policies that the VSB doesn't have, and the VSB policies have ones that we don't have, so that would be difficult. I don't think it'd be impossible, but the amount of time it would take to add the dual references would take away from the time to move forward quickly on the policies. I defer to you all how you want me to handle it, but it's a challenge that we can look into.
Yeah, I guess it might, I wouldn't look to us, I would look to you, to say, what would be the easiest and the most efficient?
Way to take it.
And I can't imagine us disagreeing.
Okay, then I will work with Dr. Schuler on coming up with a plan to go forward, if the board would like to move towards the VSB policies.
Yeah, I guess the question is, what do you need from us?
Yeah, just got to, we need...
Other than us nodding our heads?
A motion, head nod.
I think a motion would be appropriate, and if the majority of the board would like to go forward on that way, we have our marching orders, and we'll start marching.
So, if there are not any more questions, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to, to update our...
Trying to think how to phrase it.
Yeah, me too. I'm so tired.
I'll try. I move that the board transition its policies into the VSB format, with whatever individual policies are necessary, and that we ask the superintendent and his staff to propose a work plan to the board, to accomplish that, to be approved by the board upon later motion.
Good.
Second. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mancin.
You're welcome.
So that waiting motion?
And, is there anything else that you...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
The other issue that's up under the same agenda item is student publications. It's my understanding that prior to my employment, there had been an issue raised by the editor-in-chief of the Lasso, Ms. Kate Carstens. She presented a very compelling argument, and a very well-organized presentation to the board, as far as what she, as a student editor of publication, would like for the school board's policy to be on prior review, essentially whether student publications need to be reviewed in advance by a member of school staff, by the editor, or, I guess the editor in most schools is the teacher, the sponsor, whether the principal should have review, and whether there should be any type of oversight then by the board or by the superintendent. I did have a chance to look into this issue more, I did put together a memo, which is available on board docs. Prior to your adoption this afternoon, this evening, of the VSB policies, I did a fairly comprehensive analysis of what policies are throughout the state on prior review, and I did review the case law on student speech and free speech. We don't want to be in a position where we're limiting what it is our students can say. At the same time, I know, Mr. Lawrence, you raised the issue of creating a public forum, and under the case law, we want to make sure that we don't create a public forum. There's certain, I don't want to get too much into the law, it's governed by Tinker and Hazelwood, and there's a lot of cases from the United States Supreme Court saying how school officials can limit speech, and when it's appropriate, and when not to. What it comes down to is, this is a class that students take, and they get credit for. We don't want to censor, at the same time, anything that does come out in a student publication, the board would be liable for. So, given that there's liability, and given that I need to give advice to the board, I would recommend adopting some policy, whether it's the VSB policy, revising our policy to maybe allow for a greater deference to students, if they want, we want to have an appeal process, or something along those lines. But ultimately, legally, the board will be responsible for what students include in a student publication. Therefore, I strongly urge the board to include some type of review, whether that's by the editor of the newspaper, the school sponsor, and then the principal, and then an appeal process to the superintendent, or an appeal process that students or, or the principal can make to the board. That's, that's up to you all. I did outline in, in my memo, a couple of different policies. Attached to the memo are some policies, it's both the VSB policy, and policies in Charlottesville, and the Virginia Beach, and our current policy. I do think that Ms. Carstens did a wonderful job putting together her argument, though I do not suggest or recommend that the policy she proposed be one that is adopted, because there is no prior review. The other thing I did look into and did include in the memo, while Shantelie High School and Madison High School in Fairfax County do have, according to Ms. Carstens, this freedom of expression by students, there is an FCPS policy that includes prior review. So, their publications are governed much in the same way as ours are currently, and as policies are throughout the state. Also, in what Ms. Carstens put together, there are references to other states who have different, different rules and different regulations that they can follow statewide. In Virginia, all of the policies that I have reviewed do have prior review. So, if this is one that you all want to address now, we can, you all are welcome to talk about what it is you'd like to do, if you want to bundle this in with the VSB policies. I wanted to present to you all what I saw the law as, and I know this was an issue that Ms. Carstens brought up very early in the school year, so did want to get back to you all with, with what I think would be appropriate legally.
Thank you, and I think the main issue was, when I spoke with Ms. Carstens, that her, the timing of having the principal review, I don't think she was, didn't want the, Mr. Laub, who is the journalism teacher, it wasn't like she didn't, she did not, she wasn't asking that he not review it. And I think that's what the, I know, like, the school I teach, the principal doesn't review anything, it's the journalism teacher, and it's a class, and they have to write, now, I would imagine, like, if... Now, I would imagine like if there was, you know, something controversial, like I was looking at the VSBA, then it goes to the principal. But I think what Ms. Carstens concerned was every time before they could publish anything, everything had to be review, has to be reviewed by the principal, and sometimes he's busy, as you can imagine, and, and, and the, and the timing isn't always the best. And I think that, to me, I mean, that's what I gleaned from our conversation. I don't know if anybody else picked anything else up on that, but, I mean, as long as we have, yes, we need, we need someone to review it, just like all newspapers have an editor, and we need someone who is an adult to do that. But I don't think, I don't think it should be the principal with all the myriad duties he has to deal with on a daily basis to also have to do that, and then it delays publication. And sometimes articles, you know, they're timely, and if they're not published by a certain time, then they're stale, and then they can't be published. So anyway, that, that's, you know, I'm not dismissing prior review just by who it's, who does the prior review.
Mr. Ankuma?
So I had the same, I had a similar conversation with Ms. Carstens, and I asked her, so what was happening before your administration? And she says, well, previous, the principal in the past had given them some parameters and said, I'll let you do this, but if you stray, I'll come down hard on you, sort of. And I said, so what's wrong with that now? And her thing was, well, it still does not give them the flexibility that they want, and so she wants, she'd like to have it all. And I listened, like I do my daughters, and I said, okay, I'll take it back and discuss it with my colleagues. So my sentiment almost mirrors what Ms. Ward is saying, that I understand her timing where some news, some news breaks and she'd like to cover it, or the newspaper would like to cover it, but then if the principal is out and it's a couple of days, it's no longer news. I asked the question, or I mean, the rhetorical question for me was, can the principal delegate to Mr. Laub to some extent and say, run with it, and if you think it meets a certain level of scrutiny, bring it up and let's discuss it? And that, you know, or certain issues you can run with. You can run with sports, you can run with this, as long as you follow the journalism parameters or whatever. But if you're dabbling in issues that are a little sensitive or could, you know, Mr. Laub would be able, should be able to identify that and say, okay, I may have to run this by the boss, and then come back. So ultimately, we don't change much, but it's, as you lawyers say, there's the law and then there's execution of the law, or there's a enforcement of the law. So, you know, can, can some happy medium be worked out in that space, you know, to, to mitigate the timing concerns, but still retain that overall, as Margaret called it, adult supervision? Yeah, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
The VSBA policy on this, which has been adopted by two school divisions, which have been cited in the memo, provides that it is incumbent upon the faculty editor, so in this case, Mr. Laub, to, and the students, to consider issues that could be controversial and to bring that to the attention of the principal. So ultimately, it would be the principal's decision, but it would be incumbent upon both the student fac, student editors and the faculty editors to bring that to the principal's attention. The, the concern there is how much time would it take, or if the principal's unavailable, can they still publish? I do think it makes sense to have the principal have the final say. If you all want to include any type of review, I've included some policies where there is an appeal process that could be, that could come, if it needs to be quick, it would probably make more sense to bring that to the superintendent than to bring it to the board. But we can, we can write this however you would like. I do think it makes sense to, to have a review of it. I do think that giving a lot of the onus to the, the faculty editor to bring to the attention of the principal material that could be controversial would make sense. And it would be important, and I can work with the faculty editor to go through what the law is and what is required under, under the law to make sure that what's published wouldn't lead to a substantial disruption of school activities, that it wouldn't be censorship, that, wouldn't just be censoring material that's unpleasant or uncomfortable, but that would lead to enough impact to the school that it would, would impact instructional date, which is the legal standard under Tinker. And there's other legal standards. So if you would want, I can provide that training to the editors of the newspaper, the faculty sponsors, and to the principals, and then the faculty could, could go to the principal if they think that there's an issue.
And that would only, only be if there is an issue. It's not every single article would have to be submitted. You're only talking about when that red flag starts waving? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riedinger?
So I, I think we're in violent agreement. I agree with what both Ms. Ward and Mr. Ankuma said. I think we also ought to practice what we preach, and since we've said we're going to try and use VSBA policies, I'd suggest that we start and try to keep as much of the VSBA policy as we can, but have you look at it to make sure that it doesn't prohibit and in fact says that, you know, while the principal's the ultimate editor and approving authority, that the, that the faculty editor can make decisions, but should, you know, elevate to the principal on controversial matters. So something along those lines. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but hewing as closely to the VSBA policy as possible, but allowing, as, as Ms. Ward said, the timelier processing in the vast majority of cases. On the point you raise, Ms. Menzies, on about the, the appeal authority, I guess I, I kind of would like some appeal authority above the principal, and I think you're right that the superintendent is far more timely than the school board, but I don't, I don't feel incredibly strongly about that. I just, I sort of, the, the, you know, the federalist in me likes the notion that, you know, that a aggressive editor who is told she can't publish something can appeal from her principal and take it to the superintendent.
Thank you. Very good. I will, in reviewing the policies, we'll make this a priority. We'll come to the board with a policy that allows a decision by faculty with notification of the principal of controversy and appeal to the superintendent, if that's the direction the board is leaning towards.
We give some, we keep some. I like it.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the VSBA policy, I mean, all we really have to do is, where it says responsible, responsibility of the school principal editor is just say the school principal or his or her designee is responsible unless we, you know, want to specifically say that it's the faculty co-editor. But yeah, I mean, this is 99.9% of what we need.
And it's adding the appeal then to the superintendent?
Yeah, I mean, the...
If that's, if that's, and I can also, we're not deciding on the policy right now, so I can present it to you all in first reading, and if you wanted me to go back and edit it, we could, but I like to present it as close to what you want to minimize edits.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I don't have a problem with the appeal, but, you know, we're not dealing with the Pentagon Papers, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, the VSBA policy, I mean, this, this hopefully is a great example of what's going to happen. It's 99% of what we need. We've had a 10-minute discussion, and it'll take you, you know, hopefully 15 minutes.
I support that.
Anything else? That's it?
Nothing for me.
Okay, good. 6.2, and question on this, it's a discussion of the resolution 01-17, opposing confirmation of Betsy DeVos as U.S. Secretary of Education. I guess we can have a general discussion, but the board member who brought this up is not here, and he did mention that he was leaving out the potential of time up for the essence, so I don't know if we want to have a brief conversation about this and hang back and wait until he's actually...
I, I think time is of the essence.
Yeah.
Given her potential confirmation date, and I would like to discuss this briefly, I hope briefly because of the time, and hopefully we'll all be on board on this.
The floor is open if you want to get us started.
Well, I, I think the resolution itself says it all. I mean, I don't understand why this woman is nominated to run the Department of Education, which has never attended a public school. None of her family has attended a public school. She has really lacks key understandings of education, including terminology. That, I don't know if that doesn't frighten any of you. It should. So I definitely intend to sign this resolution. I hope that the rest of you are on board with me. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think time is of the essence. I mean, the idea was, I think, could we coordinate with neighboring jurisdictions to do something together? I think we do this and send it to them. If they can do something, we don't even know if they're going to meet between now and the 31st, so I definitely don't think we should wait. I mean, her nomination is, is just one of the most frighteningly irresponsible things I've seen, and I've seen lots of nominations for various posts. She's hostile to public education. She's frankly ignorant of public education, and she is a threat to public education. So this is toned down from what I would have probably said personally and frankly what I did just say, but yes, I fully support passing this and sending it around to our, our representatives and our senators, our representatives as well, not just the senators since they have to vote, but letting everybody know how we feel, because this is awful. Thank you.
Mr. Ankuma?
My issue with this is, should this be something that the board does? Why shouldn't, why can't this be done individually? I, you know, I...
But can it be done in what?
Individually.
Individually.
Individually, okay.
Why is this a board, I don't want to say board responsibility, or why is this something the board should do?
Because we stand for public education.
I understand.
It may affect us.
All my kids who come through public education, and I support public education and intend to support public education, but I guess, it's not, it's, whether she's qualified or not, heck, I can name a ton of politicians who, in my opinion, are not qualified, but I'm, I'm just saying, I'm struggling with why it's our responsibility to, why, you know, why, do we have to do this?
No, but it's not our responsibility, but I think it's our moral duty, especially in the, given the, the fact that as the Department of Education, someone who's in charge of the Department of Education, what her decisions are going to affect our students in this community, and we really need to at least sign a petition to that effect. What you do outside of the boardroom is your decision. What I plan on doing is my decision, but I hope you sign it, Michael.
I'll let others speak.
Mr. Riedinger?
So it's a little hard to know what to say on this. I, I personally agree with both John and Margaret and am happy to oppose the nomination of Mr. DeVos in my personal capacity. I'm not sure that I see a reason why the board ought to do this. It is, it is clearly something that people feel strongly about, I feel strongly about. I don't know where we draw the line if we start taking positions on nominations of certain officials. It's not a particular legislative action that directly affects us. You know, there are a lot of nominations from the administration that I oppose and a lot that I support. And I know this is an education one, but it's a federal education responsibility. It's not, I, I, I see the value in doing it because it supports public education and it supports our teachers. I just, it, it crosses a bridge that I'm not yet certain the board ought to cross.
Well, didn't we recently pass a resolution about equality when, when a certain individual was elected? We, and that had really no, definitely didn't have a direct effect on education like this does, but I think we're all on board with that resolution, and...
I'm happy to debate this if you like, Margaret. So I think that was a very different situation. It was a different situation for the following reasons. One, we were actually getting expressions of fear from our community, and it was incumbent on us to say, here's what our policies are. Second, the only thing we did in that resolution was point out what our existing approved policies were and say how they affected diversity and inclusion, and we didn't take any position for against any candidate or on any public matter. So it was a, I mean, I, that's not saying that we ought not do this. It's just saying that was a really different and far less forward-leaning action than would be opposing the, a candidate, not, opposing a nominated person for a federal government position. I said, you know, you don't have to convince me about the substance of the position. I think, I doubt there's anybody among the five remaining board members that feel differently. It's just a question of whether it's an action the board ought to take or not. And I, you know, I'm not hard over that it ought not, is an action the board ought not take. I'm just not, I've got my doubts that it's a wise thing to do.
I'm, I'm struggling with the whole, sort of the crossover into, and I think, Phil, you've mentioned that, you said it, but I'm struggling with the crossover into, I don't want to call it partisan politics or red versus blue, but that's where I feel we're going with this. When, you know, when we run our elections in the city, we run the school board, we don't run as Democrats or Republicans, right? But if we get into this space, I feel we're crossing into that, and that's what I'm struggling with.
Well, I, I think, I could see if we were opposing any other nomination, maybe for Supreme Court, maybe for the EPA, but this particular nomination has a direct impact on public education, which is what we are all working towards on this board. So I, again, like if it was any other nomination, I would think, yes, we are out of line, but given the fact that this particular entity here is, has such an effect on public education and ultimately on our students, particularly those covered under IDEA, which is a federal law, and the No Child Left Behind, that, those two laws are federal, and they have a direct impact on the students that attend this school system. So I think we should sign it.
Well, and we do take positions.
And I think it's, and I think it, I think it is not, I really do, I get, I get icked out too about, you know, taking a political stand as a body, but just given the facts of this case and the, you know, the fact that it, it does directly relate to our students, I think we really should take a stand.
Yeah, well, and Michael, to get to your point about taking a stand on red and blue, I mean, honestly, we do that all the time. We just do it through lila. I mean, you know, we go down, we lobby Richmond, and a lot of times when we lose, we, we lose because we're with the D's and the Rs are controlling things. I've been, you know, taken part in lobby days for NSBA on the Hill. It's the same thing. I mean, you're up there lobbying for something, and, you know, you can stereotype all you want, largely the, the support is going to be the Democratic side that we're supporting. So we, we don't do this very often. We did this, God, I don't know, maybe six, eight years ago, back when there was a question about repealing the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy. This board passed a resolution, I'm not sure what the form was, they passed a resolution supporting repealing that. And I asked, you know, one of the board members, that seemed odd, why would you weigh into that? And they said, it doesn't directly affect us, but if we've got kids who, you know, are gay and they want to go into the armed forces, they should be able to. So once, once it was put that way, okay, I got it. But this is the woman who is going to be in charge of the federal funding for public education for the entire country. And even if it only indirecs us, indirectly affects us because we get so little federal money, I still think we need to say that this is not the kind of person who should be in charge of all the federal education money. So I understand it's a bit of a stretch. We are way on the other side of the looking glass, so I think things like this, as odd as it may seem, and you may not want to sign it, I, I think we need to do it because we're here for public education, and I really think she is anti-public education.
I mean, my final comment as to why I'm struggling with it is, I've only been in this country 25 years, but I have seen politicians come and go, and they say things, and then they talk the job in the election, and then they have to do what really matters when it comes to... comes to it. I mean, I guess how qualifications may or may not appeal to some of us, and, you know, I'll keep my opinions to myself about how qualifications, but for what this job is, but for me, it's, I, let's just say, I'm not inclined to sign this. I'm not inclined to support it, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Other comments?
For myself, as everyone has kind of gone around the room and said, I fully agree, and I think the one piece I can say we all agree on is the qualification piece. I, and that's me and my personal beliefs of the lack of qualifications for this role. I believe that, but I too, I guess I struggle a little bit of the appropriateness for us as a body to wade into this, because I think it does potentially open up a can of worms that I'm not sure that can go back in if we, of signing this. Personal, you know, and that's taking my personal views out of this, because I, as anyone, could fully believe in public education as a person who has done that, gone through the system, families that have. But kind of listening to what John had mentioned, I think with regards to what we do in Richmond, I look at it slightly different because I know, yes, the federal piece all triples down to us, but I see the Richmond lobbying that we do as a little different in that that has a more direct impact on us. And I see that, but I think this just weighs us into a little bit more of a political stance that I am not fully comfortable in, in taking on and as a board. So, that's my, that's my feelings on it. But with that said, is, are we at a point that we want to vote on this now? Are we want to allow the other two members that are not here to take part in this, or what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, when would we meet again?
Can we do an E-vote?
No.
No.
We're just going to have to vote with this here.
We don't meet again.
The nomination is set for...
We meet next Tuesday, two weeks. So, no, I mean, I will make a motion and be outvoted if need be. But yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to do it, and if we're going to do it, we need to do it tonight.
Well, I will entertain a motion, and I think we'll do a...
Voice vote.
A voice vote.
Yes, sir.
One second. Ms. Lawrence, if you make the motion?
I move that the school board approve resolution 01-17, opposing the confirmation of Betsy DeVos as U.S. Secretary of Education.
Do I second?
Second.
Yes, Mr. Ankuma?
Nay.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Riedinger?
No.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
Yep.
All right, and the final gen item is 6.03, approval of the 2017 summer daycare fees, which we have a schedule for that.
Yeah, and I guess you can blame the lateness on me. Margaret wasn't able to go to the daycare board last night, so I did. They approved them last night. They really want to get the summer fees out as soon as possible for people, and since we don't meet for another two weeks, I said we would do our best to do it today. The increases are minor. They rarely increase fees, and honestly, they never increase them as much as I would like, but that's the reason it's suddenly got put on the agenda.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
I will say with this group here, they are very self-sustaining of the funding that they bring in each year. They don't have to come to us because they, even with the rates that they have, they are still able to create the revenue to sustain themselves, hiring teachers and everyone that are there. So, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to, for the fees for the summer.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve the 2017 summer daycare fees as proposed.
Do I second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose.
Take yours.
Mrs. Carey?
Yeah.
And we are adjourned.